It was a last-minute change from room 702 to the legislative chambers. Probably several of you went up to the seventh floor, so we're just gonna allow a couple minutes to make sure that anybody that goes up there has time to come down. And also, we'll reiterate the consent agenda before the vote in case anybody comes in later. So, we'll get started here in a moment.
I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us, and in the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. We do have a change to our consent agenda. The applicant on Agenda Item Number 25 has requested that we put that Agenda Item on for layover. So, Agenda Item Number 25 will be added to the layover consent cases. Okay, I'm gonna get started with reading the consent cases. Like I said earlier, when I read each case, if you're here and you want to discuss it today, you'll have to stand up and let us know. We'll remove it from the consent, and then we'll hear testimony from you once all the consent cases are gone through. Okay, Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-8-24-16, applicant Brad Bader. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the Alcee District. This was laid over from our January meeting. Location: 3347 and 3343 Ames Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-8-17-16, applicant Robert Kozel. It is on for approval. The request: Approval of a major amendment to a special use permit to allow convenient storage in a community commercial district. Property is also located within the Ponca Hales Environmental Overlay District. This was laid over from our January meeting. Location: Northeast of Highway 75 and Interstate 680. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Five, Case C-3-24-51, applicant Greater Omaha Packing. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of amendment to the future land use element to the city's master plan from office commercial to industrial. Location: Southwest of 30th and L Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-10-24-39, applicant 10th Avenue Freeze Out LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from MU to R7. Location: 4252 South 207th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eight, Case C-10-24-41, C-7-24-37, applicant, hope I say this right, Catal Bereded. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to CC along with approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to Section 55-883-Q to allow single-family detached in the CC District. Location: 1820 and 1816 North 33rd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C-10-24-45, applicant Completely Kids. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI Area Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 2451 St. Mary's Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-15-299, applicant Western Springs Land Corp. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for Shadowview Village. Location: Northwest of HWS Cleveland Boulevard and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-24-49, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DR to DR and MU. Location: An irregular-shaped parcel, parcel 0910702284, located adjacent to the southwest of 3404 South 144th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-24-50, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to R7. Location: 2201 North 16th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, we'll remove that, was number thirteen? Okay, Agenda Item Number Thirteen will remove. All right, continuing on, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-10-24-54, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to R4. Location: 2319 North 18th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-10-24-52, C-8-95-39, applicant Greater Omaha Packing. It is on for consent for approval. Request rezoning from CC and HI to HI along with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district and a major amendment to the special use permit to allow meatpacking and related industries in the HI District. Location: Southwest of 30th and L Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-10-24-44, applicant Staub Management. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 4925 L Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-10-24-47, applicant Omaha Retail Management LLC. On for approval. Request approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 4707 South 96th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-10-24-55, applicant Foundations Development LLC. On for approval. Request: Approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 12805 Fort Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, we'll remove that. Agenda Item Number Twenty. Okay, Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Case C-10-24-57, applicant Children's Hospital. It is on for approval. Request approval of the ACI Area Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 8552 Cass Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three, Case C-7-24-38, applicant Lund Company. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow medical office in the LO District. Location: 9802 Nicholas Street, Number 320. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Four, Case C-7-18-232, applicant Omaha Neon Sign Company. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R3 District. Property is located within a major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 6010 North 49th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Six, Case C-14-24-53, applicant Douglas County. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the vacation of a portion of Curtis Avenue west of Riverside Drive, approximately 213 feet. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-12-24-46, applicant Patrick Ackerman. It is on for layover. Request preliminary and final plat approval of North Omaha Airport, a minor plat outside city limits, with approval of a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks and Section 53911 street trees. Location: Northwest of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. And we added Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five, Case C-7-19-31, applicant Saint Robert Bellamine Church of Omaha. It's on for, was that layover? It's on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R2 District. Property is located within a major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 11900 Pacific Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. All right, before I take a motion on those cases on consent, I just read those, and those are gonna stay on consent, and no action will be taken today unless you pulled one off. We had one, two, three cases taken off of consent. Just wanna let you know, once we take a motion and vote on it, it'll be done for the day. I hope, did we miss anybody? Okay, doesn't look like it. So, for the items that are on consent for approval, do we have a motion?
Motion approved. Cases numbers two, three, five, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, and twenty-six.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, do we have a motion for the items that were on consent for layover?
Six and twenty-five.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, so those cases that we just voted on, no further action will be taken today. We thank you for coming down. You can, you're welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. We'll get started with a, yeah, I'm gonna start. Yeah, we're gonna get start with Agenda Item Number Thirteen. That was on consent for approval. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-24-50, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request rezoning from GC to R7. Location: 2201 North 16th Street. May, who's presenting?
I am, yeah. So, representing the City of Omaha, Eric England. So, this is a request for a rezoning. This was part of another case that was before the Board last month. Basically, the disposal of city ground. Before we transfer this property, we wanted to change the zoning so that it's more in compliance with the surrounding properties, and those that are zoned are seven. So, basically, we're just cleaning up the zoning before selling the property to a property owner, or a developer for future development.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? You can come forward, sir, give your name and address, please, and give your testimony.
My name's Anton Roth at 1512 Burdette, and I was just wondering what kind of intended use would that be? I mean, is it gonna be like a big four-story apartment building or something going up there?
I can answer your questions here in a minute. If that's all you have to say, I'll address that shortly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Any other opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Just some comments, questions from the Board? Eric?
Yeah, so there is no specific development plan proposed for this lot. This specific disposal of city property included several other parcels to the west of 16th Street. There was probably about fifteen total parcels in all that are, the vote last month was to approve the disposal of these properties at a future date. It'll be on City Council with a specific purchase agreement that will go to that party. At this time, there are not any specific development plans to share. I can say that there is a developer that is looking at, you know, developing the majority of the properties for affordable housing. I can't say specifically whether this parcel right on 16th Street would be included with that, but there are ongoing efforts with the city staff to work with that developer. So, later on, when there is a development proposal, there is most likely going to need to be further action that comes to Planning Board and City Council at that time with a specific development plan. So, I'm not able to tell you exactly at this point in time of what the development proposal is, but we are cleaning up the zoning to be more consistent with the surrounding property. So, I'm sorry, that doesn't fully answer your question, but that is the information that we have available at this time.
For further discussion with what those plans are, would he receive a notice?
Yeah, so if this specific site were involved with a larger development plan that came forward, it's quite possible there might need to be a PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay. There could be further zoning changes, but if this property is part of those plans, most likely it's going to have to come back to Planning Board and City Council. Just because this is a rather small lot, you know, if the future owner decided to build one house on it, that might not require an action that comes back to Planning Board, so I can't with 100% certainty say that it would, but the information available to it this time, I anticipate further entitlements necessary to come back to this Board and City Council.
I have a question.
I closed public hearing, but sir, if you wanna come on up, I'll let you ask your question. You have to give your name and address again.
Anton Roth, 1512 Burdette. If that comes up for sale, can I buy that property?
We have already been working with a developer, and we are in the process of selling it to that individual with the intent of affordable housing, so that decision has already been made to engage further with that individual. So, I would say at this time...
Kind of S.O.L. on that deal, huh?
Well, a month ago, we approved the disposition of it, so it's been in the works for a month.
Well, much longer.
Yeah, much longer.
Several months, but really, anytime we have a developer looking at affordable housing, and we have city property that we're able to sell to help facilitate that, that usually takes, you know, a higher threshold as far as future development plans and something that we are interested in, so...
If there was any ever, any changes, would I be notified to that, or could I be notified?
We can definitely add you to our database regarding interest in some properties.
I guess you could put me in as a player in the game.
What's that?
You could put me in as a player in the game.
We will add you to the database, and if anything falls through with that specific property, and it is not transferred to that developer, then yes, we can continue further conversation regarding your interest in the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you wanted to add, Eric?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Twenty. That was on consent for approval, taken off. Case C-10-24-55, applicant Foundations Development LLC. Request approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 12805 Fort Street. Okay, good, the applicant's here. You wanna come forward, sir?
Hello, Rob Woodling, Foundations Development, 1886 South 126th Street. This is a, we were here last month in regards to rezoning of this particular lot. This is another piece to add a MCC overlay for the Urban Design Review because it's so close to Fort Street, and if you'd like, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, go over information that we talked about last month if you'd like, or I'll let, take over, so, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Rob. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? You can come, come forward, sir, and give your name and address.
So, I'm Brianna James. My address is five-four-oh-seven North Hundred-and-twenty-sixth Avenue. I just have questions about the plans because this basically backs my house. So, I just wanted to know what the plans were as far as traffic and, like, is this in relation to the sports complex? I just wanted some more details.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public hearing. Rob, did you wanna come forward and?
Sure.
Brianna had a question about your plans for...
Sure, yeah, and, um, uh, this would be unrelated to the sports complex, um, to the, uh, by tranquility. Uh, this would be a affordable mixed-income senior apartment building that would be sixty-four units. There would be no access to the neighborhood at all. Traffic would go straight to Fort Street. And I'd be more than happy to talk to you after this and show you pictures and maps and stuff, so...
Yeah, Rob, if you could meet up with them.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I would just add that the MCC overlay is, elevates the design requirement. So, anytime that is added to a project that is for the benefit of surrounding properties or neighbors, it, it requires increased amount of landscaping. It requires a higher building material design. So, yes, you have the separate project that was voted on last month that will go to City Council at a future date. I don't have that specific date at this time. But this MCC overlay was a condition and, but that is a benefit, and I just wanted to point that out. So, staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item twenty-three was on consent for approval. Case C seven-dash-twenty-four-dash-thirty-eight. Applicant Lund Company. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow medical office in the L.O. district. Location ninety-eight-oh-two Nicholas Street, number three-twenty. Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon. My name's Rich Seacor with Cushman Wakefield Lund Company, Commercial Real Estate Company. I represent Tony Hallick, who's an owner of a condominium unit located at Bloomfield Hills, Office Project off of Ninety-eighth and Nicholas Street. We have a buyer prospect available by the name of Tehran Zhang, who's an orthodontist, that intends to open up a second practice at this particular location. His main practice is in council bluffs. He plans to open a practice part-time, maybe two to three days a week during standard hours of eight-thirty to five-thirty. We think this is a compatible use relative to the park. Some existing uses of the park, business consulting, wealth management, law, real estate lending, a real estate office, photography, various counseling agencies, and employment services. This gentleman, the orthodontist, intends to hire six employees, well, five in addition to himself, so there'd be six employees within the space at any given time. And then the potential of four to eight visitors or clients getting their braces or getting their braces tightened or whatever. About half of those clients are not old enough to drive. So, they're being driven by parents or being dropped off. So, the required parking ratio or the required parking number stalls for this use is about sixteen stalls, based upon the city requirements for medical use, a five-to-one ratio. The, the space is like thirty-three-hundred square feet. So, the proposed orthodontist use potentially during peak periods might be ten stalls, okay? So, we feel like we're one under the requirement relative to the use. In addition, the park has ample parking. We have a five-to-one ratio. We have a hundred-and-fifty-five stalls throughout the whole park. And based upon every user, as it sits today, and the required parking, we probably have a excess stall capacity, around forty-eight stalls. So, we have more than enough parking to accommodate anybody that wants to exceed their, their requirements. So, with that, we're hopeful that the Planning Board will approve of the conditional use permit for, for the proposed orthodontic use.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any... Yeah, I think...
Address, please.
Give your address, Rich.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, it's Rich Seacor, Cushman Wakefield Lund Company, four-five-oh, Regency Parkway Drive, Suite Two Hundred, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-one-four.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Have you seen none, are there any opponents?
How's it going? Travis Shawlan, Keystone Financial Services. Address is nine-eight-zero-two Nicholas Street, Suite, Suite Three-Fifteen. We are next door to the proposed orthodontist. We got a couple concerns. Really, the first is the parking issue. Bloomfield Forum here, you could see, that's the hundred-and-fifty-five spaces that he's talking about. But this is the backside uphill, so anyone that parks here would have to walk all the way around, which we find to be problematic for our own clients that are parking in front of our office right here. This whole strip here, there's about three or four spaces open at any given time throughout the day. So, if we have fourteen spaces with six employees and eight patients, and he says that they get dropped off, but I had braces and my mom would stay there, so I don't think they're getting dropped off for an hour appointment. So, fourteen spaces in this area is pretty tight. So, they, then that leads to parking on this side of this building where they still have to walk around because a lot of this parking, like I said, just gets filled up. And with law and wealth management, things like that, we do work with a lot of elderly clients, and them walking through the parking lot in the winter months has always been a problem and is right now. So, fourteen additional spaces taken up. We just see that being a huge issue for not only us, but the other businesses around us that have a lot of elderly clients work, walking through there. And then the second issue, being as how we have adjoining walls here, would be the concern of noise and orthodontics, office, and dental. Our conference room lies right next to there, as well as a few of our employees' offices. And we do have employees and clients with sensory disorders that we would just ask that if they are approved and if they moved in, that when they do their build-out, they're cognizant of, of that being our neighbor and the noise issues that might come with it. It's hard to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Any other opponents? Seeing none, and close public hearing. Rich? Oh, there you are. Couldn't see you behind. Did you wanna come up?
Sure.
Address the points that Travis made. You've already talked about parking, but...
Sure. So, the, the green unit is a subject unit where this orthodontic will be occupying its space, about thirty-three-hundred square feet. Again, we think the parking needs are around ten stalls or so, which is interesting because there are about five stalls right in front, and there are five stalls across the drive. So, there's roughly ten stalls kinda corresponding to this unit. The gentleman's unit next door, he's got a similar type ratio. He's got five, six stalls along here, and he's got five or six stalls here. So, if parking ever was an issue with anybody occupying this park, the association could always dedicate this area here, which nobody really parks in, as maybe dedicated employee parking to help free up visitor parking in proximity to the various entrances, to the various units. So, that would be the potential solution, in my opinion, if parking ever became a burden, whether it's this use or any other use.
Rich, I was curious, do any of the, um, the operators of the businesses have signage saying, you know, only park here for this business? Is, is there any of that, or is it just...
To my knowledge, Dan Hannan, who's the Association Director, yeah, I don't think there's any, does, does any parking. Yeah, and you, we, you know, as a, I'm, I'm a property manager too, and you always wanna kinda refrain from dedicating stalls to specific businesses because sometimes those stalls just sit empty. And, and it creates a burden for anybody else trying to park at the complex. It was a staffing company. It was an I.T. staffing. They had actually ten offices inside. So, I mean, I think, I think, I think the use of the parking is probably gonna be about the same, maybe even less.
Right. That's what I wanna know. Thank you.
What about, Travis brought up noise. Noise.
So, it's my understanding, I have braces twice. I, I don't think there's a lot of noise with braces. I'd be different if it was a dentist, because dentists are doing a lot of drilling and, you know, that kinda thing. But I think with braces, I think it's more just applying braces, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure there's, it's, it's a real noise concern.
I think part of it was maybe just the construction phase. So, we would just encourage, you know, to be good neighbors and, you know, be cognizant of that.
Absolutely, yep, we would. Yep, we try and do, if it's any major construction, we try and do it, you know, before or after hours.
Thank you, Rich. Any other comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so, as Rich had mentioned, the, the overall facility, that's how we consider parking requirements, and it is, there's an excess of parking stalls that is, yeah, I think forty-eight is what Rich said, that is accurate, over and above of what is required for the complex. So, you know, I guess we just encourage maybe if employees, you know, park further distance away to provide those closer stalls for customers. That's always good practice for any operation and, and shared office user such as this. Staff recommends approval sub... No, let me hear. Approval of the conditional use permit to allow medical office in the L.O. district subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow medical office in the limited office district, subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore? Morris? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, that was the last of the consent cases, correct? Okay. Moving on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number one, case C three-dash-twenty-four-dash-twenty-one. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the nineteen-oh-four Farnham T.I.F. redevelopment project plan, laid over from our January meeting. Location nineteen-oh-four Farnham Street. Don, you're up.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. The nineteen-oh-four Farnham, um, T.I.F. redevelopment project plan. It's located on the northwest corner of Nineteenth and Farnham, just across the street from where we're sitting now. This is a comprehensive rehabilitation of a seven-story historic building. It's on the National Register. The upper levels of the, upper six levels of the seven-story building will be affordable housing units, apartments. They're all assisted with low-income housing tax credit funding. Project also receives, is, is going to receive historic preservation income tax credits as well. So, fifty-four apartment units on the upper levels, about six thousand square feet of first-floor commercial space is involved. This project was previously approved for the T.I.F. program and for T.I.F. assistance, but it was part of a project combined two buildings. That existing T.I.F. approval will be rescinded as part of the approval of this current T.I.F. project. The development is located in extremely blighted area. That means we're looking at a twenty-year T.I.F. term for the T.I.F. The parking for the structure, they're not onsite, it'll be, the, the project will rely on the public parking structure across the street for the parking needs. The developer is nineteen-oh-four Farnham Owner LLC. It's managed by Nira Jaggerwall. Its total project investment in our central business district is twenty-three-point-one million dollars approximately. The request is for four-hundred-eighteen-thousand, two-hundred-ninety-eight dollars in T.I.F. support. This project meets the required criteria of our city's T.I.F. program. It's an appropriate land use for the location, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents? Seeing, okay.
Hi, Nira Jaggerwall, for the applicant developer, nineteen-oh-one Howard Street, Suite Three Hundred, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-oh-two. I'm just wanna echo kinda what Don said. Really, this is the first of many projects we're looking where we're taking intentional efforts to repurpose underutilized and vacant office buildings and commercial buildings into affordable housing. I think during COVID and afterward, it's been a kind of ongoing refrain to convert these underutilized office buildings into affordable housing. So, this is the first of many we're looking at. But like Don mentioned, to give a bit more color, it'll be fifty-four units, sixteen studios, ranging from six-hundred-and-fifty dollars to about seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars in rent. And a thirty-six one-bedrooms, that'll be, I think, around seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars upwards of high nine-hundreds for the rent. The mix on the first floor, looking to bring in a breakfast-lunch concept to replace Manhattan Deli, and then two smaller office suites, likely law firms or smaller kinda businesses like that. Relative to timeline, we're looking to start in roughly ninety days on the construction process. It would probably take about fourteen months. Dycon Construction is the presumed general contractor, and we're just looking forward to start the project. So, happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore? Morris? Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number four, case C three-dash-twenty-four-dash-forty-eight. Applicant City of Omaha. Request approval of a local landmark designation. Location forty-seven-oh-two South Twenty-Fifth Street. Shelly, you're up.
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm the Preservation Administrator in the City Planning Department. And the city is moving forward with designating the fire station, Old Fire Station Number Five, which is in the southwest corner of Twenty-Fifth and L. Street, designating as a local landmark, and also listing it on the National Register of Historic Places. I talk about the National Register of Historic Places because that document is used in lieu of a designation report because the criteria for local landmark designation in National Register is similar. This is a one-story building. It's constructed of concrete, is built in nineteen-forty-nine, is one of the first projects under the city's, the mayor's citywide master plan, which was adopted in nineteen-forty-six. This was the first comprehensive plan in Omaha. The project was built in the streamlined modern style. It is a unique example in Omaha of this particular style. We have very few of these style of buildings left. It was designed by William L. Labarsteele with his firm, Steel Sandman Steel. He was a pretty significant architect out of Chicago and has national recognition. He spent his last twenty years of practice in, in Omaha. The Landmarks Heritage Preservation Commission is recommending this landmark nomination. They voted on January tenth to approve the nomination. In terms of the master plan, we have found that it's in conformance with the master plan. The master plan and a number of their elements, including the land use element, supports historic preservation. The significance of the property, it is, has both cultural and historical significance. Historically, it was associated with the development of South Omaha and firefighting in the meatpacking industry. Its location was between downtown and the meatpacking, uh, packing facilities, which were both prone to fire. There was also a coordinated effort to fight fire with South Omaha and the meatpacking and the City of Omaha, which is sort of a unique collaboration. It's also important for its architecture, being the streamlined modern style and being a unique example. So, I guess at this point, we are recommending that you approve this landmark nomination.
Thank you, Shelly.
Sure.
Thank you for your presentation. Up, pre-meeting, too. Thank you for your presentation. Up, pre-meeting too. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public, okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
I would just add that we have an RFP request for proposals that have been issued more than a month ago, and it closes at the end of February. So, we wanted to make sure to designate the property while the city was still the owner. So, staff recommends approval.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Given the property's lack of parking and difficult kind of redevelopment hurdles, I do wonder what limitations we're placing on by adding this designation. I'm not necessarily against it. I just, I'm curious, given that it's already a tricky site to redevelop, what kind of those limitations are now going to be placed upon the building?
Well, and so I might call up Shelley here to, to help out, but by designating the property, it does open up both federal and state tax credits. Shelley, if you want to elaborate on the benefit or what's available, on top of potentially utilizing TIF, this is an area that's eligible within a CRA, so.
Certainly.
I don't know if you want to touch on the tax credits that could help facilitate that.
The National Register opens up the access to both the federal historic tax credit, which is a twenty-five, twenty percent tax credit on the qualified rehabilitation costs, and it also the opportunity for the state historic tax credits. And that is a twenty-five percent offset. So, theoretically, you can offset forty-five percent of the costs, the rehabilitation costs, with the tax credits if the developer chooses to do so. In terms of other limitations, you know, really, it's just a matter of maintaining the building, doing things that are not, are not going to cause deterioration to the building, doing things that are not going to detract, and that are generally, are appropriate to the style of the building. Things that have already been done that maybe not are appropriate, such as, say, the graffiti, or perhaps the enclosure of one of the apparatus bays on the north side. Those type of things, there's no requirement to reverse those or to restore it to what it was originally. It's really a matter of sort of preserving what you have there, and then whatever changes you make are reasonably appropriate to the building. The commission tends to have an attitude of really wanting to work with developers and find solutions. There are a number of architects. We have architects, myself having practiced in architecture, who, you know, we try to be very solution-based when we place these limitations relative to preservation.
You know, and I would just add, the property is zoned MBD, which does not require onsite parking, but yes, I understand the city that we live in and the location that, yes, there's probably going to be some parking needs for any future tenant or operator, depending on what their proposal is. So, you know, we would encourage just coordination. There are several parking lots, surface parking lots that are in the area, you know, if, not directly related to this, but if the RFP and the proposals come back and there's challenges that we see, I mean, that is something that, you know, the city can continue to explore and see if there's any other types of arrangements in parking that, you know, that, that the city has access to, and just continue to coordinate if, if that is a hindrance, I guess, regarding, you know, the parking and not having any onsite. So, I, I guess we'll have to see what those proposals are and, you know, act accordingly or in response of that. But we definitely do think that this is an asset that deserves, you know, preservation, and it does open up those other tax credits, but we, we do understand that there are some limitations then that, that are on the site. But it is a fairly small site. You know, if it, if it wasn't eligible for a landmark and somebody knocked down, you know, the building, I mean, there's not much that you could put on it anyways, and we would hate to see it just become an addition of the parking lot that exists to the south, so.
Agreed. No, I think it's a great asset. I, I just, I, I don't want to, I just wanted to understand a little bit more what the designation does. I wouldn't want it to be further burdened by regulations where it's already sort of tricky, and, and I know what those designations do when you're trying to build out even the interior of a space and in a sort of high construction cost environment. I feel like we have to be careful about what we do place in terms of regulation, you know.
Yes, I, certainly I understand. And I would note that landmark designation, local landmark designation, does not look at interiors unless there's a significant interior space of public importance, such as, say, a sanctuary or lobby in a significant building. For instance, we look at things that happened in the Durham Museum. In this particular case, the purview for the commission would only be to the exterior.
And the tax credit programs, though, if they were to be implemented, they do dictate the inside, though, I believe, so.
Yes, they would look at the interior. And in this particular case, we've got a pretty bare bones building, an industrial building, and, you know, I, I think there would be quite a bit of flexibility with it, so.
Again, if you want to pop a window into this building, can you or can't you? And I think it needs more windows. So, that's, those are the, one of those, it's just kind of an interesting one, to be honest, and I wanted to understand from a feasibility standpoint, you know, where this thing sits if we do grant it the, the designation. That's all.
I would add that our, the RFP that has been issued is very clear that the city is partaking this exercise as far as nominations. So, that information should be out there to any potential buyers, and the RFP is very clear on, on that. There's documentation that supports that, that's been provided.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Eric, we're back to you again.
The staff recommends approval.
Any additional comments, questions? Okay. If you have a motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number nine, case C ten dash twenty-four dash forty-two. C seven dash twenty-four dash forty-three, applicant Bob Schlot, request rezoning from DS to CBD, along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow outdoor entertainment in the CBD district. Property is located within an ACI area civic importance overlay district, location seven twenty-seven South Thirteenth Street. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Matt Herzog with Project Advocates, thirteen thirteen Cummings Street, suite two hundred, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh two. I'm here tonight, or today, to talk about the rezoning of this land from DS to CBD. The intent here is to have a, a public park privately funded through some great donations, largely led by the Schlot family, that currently owns the property. This is a parking lot now that would turn into a interior city park downtown to offer respite for people in the old market, also homeowners around there. It has some green space for different entertainment activities that could take place there as well. The other part of this is a conditional use permit for the outdoor entertainment piece.
Anything else?
We're working with the adjacent property owners. I know the, the twelve thirteen Jones, which is this property up here, we've been working with them on, there's currently a curb cut to allow access, and they, they do come across the existing adjacent property to park in there. We're in discussions with them about eliminating that curb cut. I know they would like to keep it potentially for, for future. And I think our biggest concern is if this is a public park, trying to eliminate vehicles to be in that park to cause potential issues for people that are in the park. And then we're also working with Bemis, which is to the south here. The improvements you see on their property, we've been in close coordination with them, and I think they're in support of the project as well. The last piece of this is on Twelfth Street. This current plan does show some elimination of angled parking. We've been working with the city on the requirements there. There, there's an opportunity, if the, if the city's not agreeable to removing the angled parking, to potentially look at maybe parallel parking. The goal is to really connect, you know, for pedestrians walking down through this area. Currently, right now, the sidewalk ends, but we want to have straight connectivity down through to Bemis as well, and be able to enhance the, the park amenities with that. But, but we're open to further discussions with the city on that.
Any questions?
I have a question. Your site plan shows some of your development there on that, on that northern parcel encroaching on their property. And so, I mean, that, and obviously can't happen unless you have an agreement with them.
Correct.
And, and they obviously park there now, so that's still some contention. How's that going to get resolved?
We've been working with them. I think their, their current position is that we keep a curb cut there and not park on that. So, that, in the future, if they do desire to have parking there, they could in that area.
Hi, yeah, I'm Megan Wolf with Olson, twenty-one eleven South Sixty-seventh Street, suite two hundred. I'm a civil engineer for the project. And just so you guys are aware, the owners of twelve thirteen were at planning board last month to change their zoning to CBD as well to remove the onsite parking requirement. So, there's no onsite parking requirement anymore. And we've also been working with the City of Omaha staff to do unlimited parking meters along, what's that, eleven, along Thirteenth Street, so that the employees of that law office could park there for an unlimited amount of time. And then I think it was going to be fifty cents per hour instead of a dollar. And then also, we were looking at reserving stalls in the nearby parking garage for them as well.
Any additional questions for Matt? Okay, thank you, Matt. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any, are you any proponent, sir?
Yes and no.
Hi, Albert McKetto. I represent twelve thirteen Jones LLC. We own the property that is surrounded by the applicant's property. We're generally in support of the project. We think it's great for the neighborhood. The only request we made to the park developers was that we would like to be able to maintain the right to a driveway access to our property. I think as long as we hit the city's driveway standards, we think we should be allowed to do that. And we just want to be able to preserve the right. As, as that building has been around, it's had number of tenants over the years, and so we have to make sure that if we have a different tenant, that we have, are able to accommodate whatever their needs are. Thank you.
Thanks, Albert. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Additional, well, Matt, did you want to come up with what Albert said? You're fine with their request, correct?
Yes, we're willing to work with them to get that figured out.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, I, Ryan Haas, if you could come up from Public Works, I think we should just have, just two components as far as driveway access off of Jones Street. I think it'd be good just to state on the record what was discussed in the pre-meeting. And then also regarding the parking on Twelfth Street, you know, I'll kind of lead into that. Obviously, there is a recent street project on Twelfth Street and Jones, and expense has been put in to put in the diagonal parking. You know, I'm not aware of any parallel parking that's been discussed up to this point, so I guess I'll give Ryan a chance to comment on both of those issues.
Yeah, Ryan Haas at Public Works. The issue of the Twelfth Street on-street parking, I, to my knowledge, has been resolved. That was something that was requested and discussed at the pre-application meeting. We took that information to the, the folks who'd be responsible for making the decision, city traffic engineer, the city parking manager. Essentially, it was very clear that there was no desire to allow any modification to the on-street parking that was constructed as part of the recent Jones Street public improvement project that the city did within the last several years. So, to my knowledge, that, that decision is, is done, and we can now focus on working with the applicant to get the standard requirements met on the streetscape with regards to the planters and those sorts of things, and then the standard sidewalks, with a transition happening halfway down the block there between Jones and Leavenworth. Excuse me. With regards to the access on Jones Street, it, it's a little bit tricky because it's a function of what the land use is going to be in that building. If, if it is restricted to where the, essentially, it's like a single-family type use, then they can have a driveway where you pull in and back out like you would typically see for a detached, single-family use. If it's multifamily or commercial, effectively, there's not enough room on the site for a parking area and a drive aisle, as far as I'm aware. If there's no easement rights for the way it's currently configured, so in that scenario, there'd effectively be no way to comply with the city's driveway regulations, and they wouldn't be able to take an access. It's just a very constrained site with a lot of building coverage. So, that could be a challenge, and we'd have to work with, with the property owner if there are changes to the access.
Thank you, Ryan. So, I guess, I would just add, you know, Ryan addressed the Twelfth Street diagonal parking, and as recommended in the recommendation report, that that needs to remain, is consistent and will be the city's recommendation. Few items to, to work through, Ryan had mentioned streetscaping, a few urban design items. So, really, you know, I guess probably the trickiest item is, is this driveway access. Matt or Megan, if you could come up, do you know that it, it looks like the location of the current driveway is split on both properties. Is, is that accurate?
That is accurate, and I think, I believe there's a current access agreement in place.
So, I guess the question is, how does that get resolved if there is an existing access agreement without knowing what the terms of that is? You know, I don't know if that's a designated distance or width. I guess if you could just maybe elaborate, and also after Ryan Haas spoke from Public Works' stance.
Yeah, so, Bob Schlot did grant.
We need to name, your name and address.
Oh, Megan Wolf.
Matt's name and address again, sorry.
Megan Wolf from Olson, twenty-one eleven South Sixty-seventh Street, suite two hundred, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one zero six.
Matt Herzog with Project Advocates, thirteen thirteen Cummings Street, suite two hundred, six eight one oh two.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, the owner of the property where we're putting the garden did grant, the owners of twelve thirteen, a temporary access easement. That easement has been revoked, so there is no access easement right now for them to cross their property to park. So, there's no easement in place. If you look at it from the property line on the west of twelve thirteen, there's about eleven and a half feet from their property line to a historic landmark pole that cannot be removed and has to remain. So, there is not enough room to comply with the City of Omaha driveway standard, which is sixteen feet.
Thank you.
I think as far as Ryan's comment on the parking on Twelfth Street, you know, we're, we're certainly agreeable to make that work, keeping the diagonal.
Okay, thank you. You can continue dialogue. I will read the city's recommendation. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DS to CBD, approval of the conditional use permit to allow outdoor entertainment, subject to the seventeen conditions in the recommendation report.
Was there any additional comments or questions? Dave, did you have, I wrote down that you had a question earlier. Did you get that answered?
I mean, there's, there's a lot of contributing issues there on this, access to the, to the west side of the property there. And I guess from, from your testimony, Albert, that you're content that somehow something could be worked out to your, to your satisfaction. Am I understanding that correctly? You want to come back up, Albert?
Yes, we, we believe so.
Name and address again.
Albert McKetto, twelve thirteen Jones Street. Yeah, we can, I'm sure we can work something out. We may, I mean, it could be that, that at some point in the future, that does switch to a different use, which could be single-family, so we would have room for a driveway within the regulations of the city to do that. So, we just want to make sure we go on record as saying that we want to preserve the option to be able to do that, if not now, someday in the future. Thank you.
Eric, if I'm not mistaken, if we approve it this way, that doesn't exist, right?
I guess I would probably defer and maybe have Ryan come up. So, Ryan, I guess Dave's question and maybe my question is, the driveway goes away at this time, on-street parking, striping is continued on Jones Street. If there is a single-family future user for that building, where does that put us regarding new metered parking that's been placed on Jones?
It'd be subject to a future application by the property owner at that time.
And that would be reviewed by your department and Park Omaha?
Correct.
Driveway regulations, Park Omaha with the meters and the diagonal stalls, and potentially, if it was viewed acceptable, then the modifications are made to allow that.
Separately at that time, yeah.
Does that sound reasonable, Albert?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning from DS to CBD. Approval of conditional use permit to allow outdoor entertainment in CBD District, subject to the seventeen conditions in the staff report prior to reporting to council. This doesn't go to council, does it?
Only the rezoning goes to council, so.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin? Morris? Paige? Pete? Sotolongo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve seven to zero.
Agenda item number sixteen, case C11-73-78, C7-24-56, applicant BDS Properties. Request approval of a major amendment to the planned unit development overlay district, along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow single-family attached in the R4 District. Location, east of 80th and Reed Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, my name is Christina Spengenberg, representing BDS Properties. We are here regarding lots one through ten at North 79th Court and asking for a major amendment to the current PUD, along with a conditional use permit, um, for the construction of eight single-family attached buildings for a total of sixteen units.
Anything else you wanna add?
Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the? Yeah, we might have some, but. We, we've discussed this in the pre-meeting, but that's why we're, anyways, yeah, we might have some additional.
Absolutely.
Okay.
My personal address?
Yes.
Or business, whichever.
Twenty-two oh four North 188th Avenue, Elkhorn, Nebraska.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Hello, my name is Mara Moore. I am the treasurer of the Glenbrook Association Board of Directors. My address is seventy-eight oh six Reed Plaza, and I'm here to represent the board. I'm not gonna reiterate the letter that we sent you guys, along with email communications. We just wanna say that we are fully within our rights and our covenants. And respectfully request that you deny the permit until we approve plans per our covenants. If you have specific questions regarding the specific section of covenants I provided or our letter, the president of our HOA is here as well to answer those, so.
Mara, I have a question while you're there.
Yep.
How long do you, could you summarize, obviously, the correspondence you sent was, was pretty lengthy. So I guess for the benefit of the board, could you just summarize a, a few points? Is the concern, style, parking, garage size, could you just give a summation of some brief points for?
Yep, so, um, the original plans that were submitted to us, it was about the style. The second set of plans, um, it has, a big portion of it is the number of units. We're a very spacious community, um, and we believe that the sixteen units is too many. We have proposed six duplexes, which is twelve units, would be acceptable plans for us to look at. And then, we are also opposed to the single-car garage proposal. We would like double-car garages because the other streets in our development have spare parking for those homes that currently exist with single, single-car garages. This street, however, does not, and we don't have the ability to put it in. So, that is why we are requesting the double-car garages versus single-car and double driveway, which is what's being proposed. Because it's, it's gonna create really unsafe parking, since the street is only wide enough for current emergency vehicles.
Okay, as a follow-up, regarding the, the private covenants that you have in place, you said you would like this delayed or denied until a chance to approve. Do you, um, have you, and maybe this is also a question for the applicant, has there been dialogue? Has there been conversations, proposals? Is, do you believe there's area for compromise? Just your perspective on that, and I guess I would also ask the applicant of that here shortly after testimony from opposition.
Yes, so most of the communication has been directly with Diane Taylor, our president. We have looked at two specific sets of plans. We unders, we only look at plans that are full plans, um, so complete plans. And we do have, per our covenants, thirty days to review those as a board and respond in writing to the applicant. So, we, we are ver, we really do want units to be built there, I mean, that is income for us. But they do have to, we have to respect what the current community is like. Um, and we have a bigger responsibility to the future of the association.
Let me ask you a question, when you say complete plans, you're not expecting complete buildable plans before you approve, are you?
So, the, our covenants require complete plans, which our, which are, they're specifications that show the nature, kind, shape, heights, materials, color of paint, number, and location of the units.
Well, they're close to that, so maybe they don't have the narrative for what kind of materials, um, unless it's already been given.
We, we have already actually come to an agreement on that. Their application, which states the Hardy Board and that sort of thing, we've already come to an agreement on that with previous plans. So we're not opposed to that. It's purely the, at this point, it's the number of units, as well as the single-car versus double-car garages.
So those are really the two principal units?
Yes. Yes.
Your covenants actually restrict the number of units?
Yes, so it said, our covenants indicate that, um, let me find it quick. So plans have to be submitted and approved in writing as to the number of dwelling units. The harmony of the external design, color, and location in relation to surrounding structures and topography by the Board of Directors, so.
It doesn't restrict, it just says a number, just need to know how many units.
Correct.
Any additional questions?
It is, well, let me get to it, I believe it's R4 with a cluster overlay and a PUD overlay. Sorry, not on the page. Yes, R4, PUD, and it's also within a cluster subdivision.
Any more from Mara? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other opponents?
My name's Diane Taylor, I live at seven zero three seven North 79th Court. I am the current president of the Glenbrook Homeowners Association. You had requested whether we had had correspondence with the applicants. The last correspondence we had was September eighteenth of twenty twenty-three. We've had no correspondence with them since. At that particular time, they submitted a second housing plan. The outside pictures that they gave us were much more compatible with the area, with our area. And we said fine with that, but we needed the detailed plans. We have not received any detailed plans, such as those that were submitted in the application for today. Our concern is, like you say, the double garage and parking. We've run into this situation in our single-family area, where parking in our streets is not allowed. We've had to post it. According to the Fire Department for the City of Omaha, the streets have to be, if it's, or there has to be a twenty-four-foot clearance on the street for the access of emergency vehicles. This street, as I measured it this morning, is currently twenty-two feet wide. If you put in a double garage with a double-wide driveway, you're at least giving parking for at least four vehicles without a problem. If you put in a single-car garage and you have two or three vehicles, we all know people do not park behind their own car. That means somebody has to get up the next morning, move their car, so the person in front of them can get out. With the spacing of sixteen units on this particular street, there will not be any curbside unit or space for street parking. So, street parking will not be allowed on that street at only twenty-two foot wide. In addition, a two-car garage would expand the, uh, square footage of the home and make it more, a, a better perspective from a buyer's standpoint than the current one, single-car garage. So, those are our primary concerns at this point. We have to look at, as a board, we have to look at what's best for the community ten, twenty years from now, not just to sell the property and sell homes. We have to look at it down the road. So we're looking at what's going on and what's gonna happen to these ten, twelve months, uh, years down the road. I'm not gonna be on the board at that particular point in time, but people after me will have to, uh, go by what we've decided today. Any other questions?
Any, yeah, questions for Diane? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? None, okay, I'll close the public hearing. Christina? Did you wanna come up and give you the opportunity to-
Yes.
-address some of their concerns or all their concerns?
Um, so, we have been in communication with the HOA and submitted plans to them. And have addressed all of their concerns. To the point that we have specifically asked what they want there, because our initial couple of, um, ideas, they did not like. So, one of their concerns was the number of units. In their email here, part of their requirements, they wanted duplexes, um, sorry, duplexes, with the number of units being determined by a fifteen-foot minimum spacing in between, which is what our plan does provide, um, with the sixteen units. I also have a, this is the current, um, neighborhood. This is the area where we propose to build sixteen units. This is a, uh, an estimate, but a fairly, um, good estimate. The area here is fifty-six thousand, uh, square feet that we're proposing to put the sixteen units on. These, uh, lots over here consist of sixteen current units in the neighborhood. And the area of that is less than what we're proposing to put sixteen more units on. The other area of concern was the one-car garage. There are many units in the neighborhood already with one-car garage stalls. And we have mitigated the, the issue of the parking. Sorry, I have a lot of paperwork up here, let me find my, um, with the flare-out in the driveway. That is gonna mitigate anyone needing to move or rearrange vehicles if they are trying to, if they have more than one vehicle and are trying to get out in and out of the driveway. There are other areas within the neighborhood with very similar, um, parking. For example, and this is just one, but this is a flare-out right here. This is cement right in front of these units. There's a flare-out here, here, um, and this is just one small section of, of the neighborhood.
Christina, that, that house you just showed, is that a two-car garage or one-car?
I may not know, just by looking at that. I believe that's a two-car, actually. I believe that's a two-car garage stall with the extra parking. And then, um, as far as, uh, dialogue for approval, like I said, there was a lot of communication. We specifically asked them what they wanted, they, I have highlighted here, their asks. The only item listed here, sorry, that's a little fuzzy. The only item listed here that we had asked to, um, veer off from was the two-car garage stall. And, um, coming up with plans, official plans and site plans, um, is timely and cost, costly, to say the least. So, we asked, um, to come up with those requirements. We made a plan that fit those. Asked them to accept the one-car garage stall instead of the two. And she gave written consent that the board members have responded and stated that they will agree with your exception to construct the duplexes with single-car garages, as long as there is driveway parking for at least two vehicles. So, a, at this point, we feel as though the HOA is asking us to bear requirements that the rest of the neighborhood has not had to adhere to. I guess in, in summary, we ask for approval for the PUD and the conditional use permit, as it does meet the objectives and the goals of the city's master plan. Do you guys have any other questions?
I do have a question.
Sure.
And this may not be a consistent distance because of the shape of the subject site. What is the approximate distance of the driveway from the paving of 79th Court to the structure?
So, it does vary a little bit, but these are longer driveways than the other neighborhood, or than some of the other, uh, units in the neighborhood. Some of them, I believe, are as long as forty feet to fifty feet. That, that's probably an approximate, uh, median length of driveway.
So, my next question, you, well, I guess stay up there, I'll, I'll say a few things. The city is not a party to the private covenants. Obviously, I think it's important for this conversation, though, to occur, because it, it does ultimately impact the potential of the buildability of these lots or this project. So, you know, we are, we are talking covenants that the city is not reviewing a party to, subject to, so I wanted to throw that out there. You know, we are reviewing our, our city criteria, regulations, you know, policies as it is. And obviously, that's where the recommendation report, um, really has its, its basis in. But I guess my question to you, you recognize, do you recognize the need for the HOA to sign off on your project in order to move forward? I guess where do you stand on that? Let, let's say the planning board recommends approval today, let's say this goes to city council. Let's say this project is approved by the city through the, the normal channels of entitlement. You are then, you know, to the point of recording a final plat, administrative minor plat, leading up to building permit, submitting to the city, we approve the building permits, you start construction of the homes. Where do you view the private covenants as it relates to your project overall? And where that puts you?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's been our goal the whole time to, um, find something that works for both of us. It's come to my attention that this isn't the first time, um, a builder has had issues with the HOA. There's nothing in their covenants that, um, say, there, there's nothing that we are proposing that their covenants have outlined that we are unable to put there. Like I said, the rest of the neighborhood, um, we're putting in what's already there. Again, it, it's still our goal to work with the HOA and do what's best for everybody and come to an agreement, prior to starting construction.
Yeah, if I can just make a comment, so, from my lens, it appears that you're trying to comply with some of the requirements the HOA has put upon you. It just seems like you have.
It just seems like you have.
Yeah.
HOA, I know you've been trying to work with them as well. I would continue to, I would, I would advise you to continue to have your dialogues. But if there are existing homes that have single driveways already there, um, you've got evidence, obviously, at the, you've had communications with the HOA. I think that's all great. I think the plan is solid, uh, from my lens, again. And again, from the HOA's perspective, continue to have dialogue with them. They're not your enemies, right? Maybe neighbors at some point in time, but that's the best way to solve the problem. Um, so, yeah, we're not a party to private covenants, so we can't, we can't, you know, we can't enforce anything that the HOA is trying to enforce on you. But, uh, I think it's a solid plan. I think you've come up with a solid plan.
Any additional comments? Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we have seen previous proposals. Those were, I don't recall, I, I believe there was a layover at a planning board several years ago of a, of a different development uh, for this site. Uh, that did not come back. I don't remember those exact details of that project. But really, we're, we are reviewing, uh, the project as it comes in with our regulations, as I said. And so, um, there are two important components, I, I think, to specifically identify here. And as the report is written, there are, uh, two waivers currently with zoning code that would be required, which are being supported. And so, one of those is the setback of, of the home. Current cluster regulations require a twenty-five-foot setback. Anytime you have a, a garage that's oriented to or facing a private way, so that'd be Seventy-Ninth Court. We are currently in the process of a zoning code amendment that will be on city council February twenty-seventh for a public hearing that would drastically modify and reduce that, as you are aware, that we have previously heard, um, at this board a couple of months ago. And that's basically in response to trying to adapt, um, you know, the need for housing and more compact, unique designs when it, what involves clusters and PUDs. Yes, this is a, a much older PUD than what we have been seeing with, with new developments that are bringing up the homes and garages closer to the private street. But with the anticipated zoning code amendment, um, hopefully, city council approves that here within the next month. That would no longer be a waiver that is needed. So, we are supportive of that. The other one is related to the number of parking stalls. And that is specifically because, um, on the specific lots, there is only one stall that is technically being required. However, due to the, um, the long driveways that I was asking Christina about, we believe that ample parking is being provided. Usually, uh, each unit would require, uh, two parking stalls. It doesn't require two, two garage or anything like that, but it, the zoning code requires two parking stalls on-site. But because of that extra length of the driveway that does cross over from property line to the, to the private outlot that Seventy-Ninth Court is within, we are supportive of that as well. So, um, I would just reiterate that, um, we are not a, a party to private covenants, um, whether it's this site or any other. I do encourage continued coordination, you know. We'd like to see, you know, this area, uh, be developed. We do think it's compatible with the surrounding, uh, PUD. There is a combination of single-car garage, two-car garage, you know, different styles, uh, that exist there now. So, city staff is comfortable with the recommendation for approval moving forward, but we do, um, you know, strongly encourage continued coordination because ultimately, I don't know where it stands as far as a, a private matter. And, you know, I'll defer to the, the HOA and the, and developer on that. But, um, with that being said, staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the PUD subject to submittal of acceptable final PUD plans prior to city council and approval of the conditional use permit to allow single-family attached in the R4 district, subject to the eight conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Major amendment to the PUD unit redevelopment overlay district, subject to submittal of an acceptable final PUD plans prior to forwarding the request onto city council and approval of the conditional use permit to allow single-family attached in the R4 district, subject to the eight conditions outlined in the report.
Second. Motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Pete?
Yes.
Soro Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number seventeen, case C eleven dash twenty-two dash one eighty. Applicant Talented Tenth Group Inc. Request approval of a major amendment to the planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street. Hi, Don, you're up.
Hello, everyone. Don Curry, executive director, Talented Tenth Group, thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street. So, I'm here today based on the meeting that we had in reference to the second development, which is thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. Uh, that's going to be another three-plex. This particular project that we're here about today, uh, and I want to thank the opposition for kind of causing this because I'm a firm believer that things happen for a reason. And I want to also apologize to Mr. Director, Assistant Director in the Planning Department, if it appeared as though I went rogue and just literally violated the PUR agreement. And I'm truly gonna plead just lack of knowledge and being an emerging developer and not used to the system and what the PUR meant here in Omaha. And I was thinking today, like, okay, what caused me to really go down the path of making changes? And it was, again, financial constraints, not financial constraints from the perspective of not having the funding to complete the project or running out of money. The way that my financing went is that I could only start submitting the plans out for bids after I had approved plans. Because at, at, at that point, as we all know, that's pretty much the way to get a solid bid. So, my financing came through Front Porch Investments, and I received seven-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. And that was a one percent loan for twenty years with the mandate that the project remains affordable for a twenty-year period. So, two of the, two of the units will be affordable, one unit will be market rate. And this is, again, thirty-three twenty-four that I'm speaking to. So, once I started getting bids back, and keep in mind, I just told you that, again, I was approved for seven-thirty-two, and this is affordable housing. This is not private or market-rate renting at all. So, once I started submitting bids, requesting bids, rather, I got bids back for one-point-six million. I got a bid back for nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand. And at that point, I was not the GC. I, I reached back out to Front Porch and I say, hey, I'm getting these astronomical bids. I need to apply for some more money. So, I applied for more funds in conjunction with me applying for funds from Front Porch for thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. Front Porch came back and said, we're going to give you addition, we're gonna give you the monies to build thirty-two oh four, but we're not gonna give you any additional money for thirty-three twenty-four. You're gonna have to make what we allotted you work. So, they were kind enough to link me up with Todd Heistad. I'm sure you all are familiar with Todd. He's on the board for Front Porch. Todd says to me that the only way you're gonna make this project work is if you become the general contractor. This is December of, December, first week of December, uh, twenty-twenty-two. So, I said, hey, Todd, I planned on taking the exam, but yet I didn't plan on doing it until after I completed the first project. And he's like, well, if you wanna get it done, you need to get, you know, kind of speed the timeline up. So, I ordered the books that week, started studying for that exam probably around December thirteenth, and I took it January twenty-third of twenty-twenty-three. And now, a Class A GC and got bids to come in for the site within budget, but yet they were, me removing the items that I showed you in the plans that we basically, why are we here today? The items that I removed from the, the project. So, how I really could've caught myself to know that I needed you all's approval before I made any of these changes was that the lumber company, I went through SCS, uh, Structural Component Systems for lumber, and I got to reducing the number of windows because I noticed that off of the back porch, and I'll show you this now, I guess we can get into this. So, what I'm getting at is that there were, there was certain design elements that I caught and certain requests that I made from, of the architect when it came to giving me a, a new layout for the windows in which he, that I was gonna submit, that I submitted to Structural Component Systems, so, in which he should've said, hey, Don, you do know that before you make any of these changes, you need to talk to planning and get their approval. That was not, I didn't know. And he didn't say that to me. He didn't forewarn me because that would've stopped me right there before we even got to framing. So, as the project progresses, I'm moving according to budget and saying, okay, this is what we're gonna remove and this is what we're not gonna do, right? So, this is a rendering of what I came up with in conjunction to Eric, uh, Tim Fries and Jen Bolson. We had a meeting, again, after thirty-two oh four. Uh, it was called to their attention that I was not building what I said I was going to build. So, they called me in. We had a meeting in reference to it, and they said, well, hey, what, what can you do, given where you are right now? So, at this, at this present time, because word is circulated in the community, which amazes me, that I don't have any money to finish this project. Right now, I'm five-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars in on this project with a hundred-and-forty-eight sitting in my account with Front Porch, which can be, which can be verified, and that's more than enough for me to finish this project, given the, the track that I was on, based on the items that I removed from the building. So, just from looking at the design, here's the window. Well, actually, let me show you all the original plan. So, this is what was approved on this side. This is the back door. And I'll show you a video confirming all of this. When we got the framing, the back door was here. But when you opened the back door, the water lines for the sprinkler system were directly in front of the back door. So, you had no room to maneuver around or anything of the sort. And then, as far as anyone coming in that was in a wheelchair, there was no way for them to actually enter, enter the, the, the property from that back door at all. So, that's why we moved the door to the, uh, north side of the building. As far as these windows go here, when you look in these windows, you would've actually seen the staircase, laddering up. So, it was not as if you were looking directly into the property itself, and I'll be able to show you this again via video. Same situation off of the back porch, which is that, from a design perspective, the only window that made sense on the second floor, you know, looking at what I'm willing to do going forward, what I have to do, hopefully, going forward, if, if we're able to get over these hurdles. This is the only window that makes sense to be installed off of the second-floor back porch. Reason being, again, these three windows are suspended, um, off of the, uh, the sec, the, the stairway that's leading to the third floor. So, there's no way to open these windows if they were installed at all. And I'll, I'll be able to show you that again during the video. Um, third floor, same situation. Windows basically suspended. We installed this window, and that's, again, when it dawned on me, like, all right, you know, um, this had to be done, but we still, we already had this window in. And it's, it's just sitting there, and I'll show you again in video. You can't, we, we would have to get on a ladder to open this window, literally. Um, here again, off of the third floor, uh, this, this window is the only one that makes sense because these three would be suspended. We also, uh, when I was over at the site today, on on the north side of the building, and this is, again, uh, with my electricians installing the, 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 um, lines to specs, there's actually electrical line running directly in front of this window right now that's gonna supply the, the back porch heater. There's also another one on the third floor that would be in the way for a, another heater as well. So, these windows, again, if we would've put them in, you know, the, the electrician, uh, could've went around them, but, you know, I, I, you know, as far as that goes, I don't know how the inspection would've went. You got me on that one. But, again, if it's a matter of you all saying, hey, Don, if you come back and you add these windows, I have no problem with that at all. No problem at all. But I'm saying all of this to say to you all is that I did not do anything from the standpoint of just going rogue and thumbing my nose at you all because I really did not understand that the PUR was law. I mean, after, after the architect, after we got our permit, they pretty much told me that the only way we're gonna work with you going forward, we'll give you two visits, which I never seen them show up at the site. They told me that they drove by the site a couple of times. No one gave me a call to say, hey, Don, we're in the area, uh, we'd love to stop by just to see where you're at. They pretty much literally just saw the permit was issued through and, and that was it. There was no guidance going forward when I clearly explained to them that this is my first time developing a new construction project in the city of Omaha.
Say, Don, can I interrupt you and just ask you maybe a couple of questions while it's fresh in my mind?
Yes.
On this, okay? So, you submitted plans prior, right, on this development?
Yes.
Right? That shows basically what was expected to be built?
Yes.
All right? That changed.
Yes.
Right?
And I'd also add too that, um, I guess the, I looked at it from two perspectives, which is that we, when I first realized, okay, I should've been intimately more involved in the design of this building when we were wrapping, when the brick facade was wrapped around the building. And I said, well, wait a minute, that's gonna be fairly extensive as far as costs go. So, I was of the thought that any changes that needed to be made should've been made prior to the permit being issued. So, that was the first time we requested a change.
Let me, let me finish my thought here, where you're going, okay? So, if I'm loaning you the money, first of all, let me ask you, what did Front Porch base their amount that they were gonna give you on?
Uh, we got a bid from Overland Construction.
Okay. You got a bid for how much?
And that bid came back at seven-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars.
Okay. So, you had a bid, they, they lent you the money under the terms, right, based on that original plan?
Well, we, I, obviously, we had to get the permit and everything.
No, but based on the original plans that you probably, uh, previously submitted to the planning.
Yeah, only, only thing that Front Porch wanted to see was just more or less a rendering of the building.
But I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I'm with you. Yes.
What was the bid based on?
The bid was based on.
The original plans?
Yes, it was. But it was not approved.
That we saw.
Yeah, it was not approved, though. These were preliminary plans. It was not, because I, yeah, because I had to have all of this in.
It was just an estimate, then?
Yeah, exactly.
An architectural estimate?
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So, if I'm loaning the money, though, I want a firm commitment that that's gonna be the amount of construction. You went after the fact, then you, you went out and got bids that came up to one-point-two million dollars, right?
Yes.
You put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah. So, you should've gotten the bids prior to even going to Front Porch, saying, this is exactly how much it's gonna cost me to comply with these requirements that I have to build this, this, these, these units.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you would've been okay, right? You'd had enough money.
No doubt.
Now, you're trying to retrofit it to make it work within the budget that you have and the dollars that you have to work with.
Yes.
Right? So, you put the cart before the horse.
Yeah. And I was on the job training with, with, uh, thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. I'm fully, more than enough money based on my experience with thirty-two, thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street.
Why, why didn't you, why didn't you do it, though, in, in, in the manner that, that I'm looking at it from, which is get your bids, get solid bids? Here's what we're gonna build. Get the bids, get the project costs all in line. Go to Front Porch, say, I need this much money, and get, why didn't you do it that way to begin with?
Time constraints. The, when, when Front Porch came out with their innovation fund, they needed everything within a certain window as far as even qualifying for the funding. And I was part of the first round of funding, so it was time constraints.
Yeah.
For sure.
And, and Overland Construction, they're pretty good contractors, right? They just looked at, what did they look at?
They looked at the full set of plans, and this was back in, um, I wanna say, uh, December of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. So, what's the difference, what happened between then and the estimates that you got in, the bids that you got in that increased the budget to one-point-two million dollars?
Well, here we go. So, I, I, I'd bitten it out, and electricians, few electricians came back, well, few GCs came back at the one-point-two, one came back at nine, nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand. Luckily, one GC, or electrician, rather, that I sent the to, he came back and said, hey, your building is actually wired for commercial electrical wiring. He said, this isn't a, this is a residential building, correct? I said, yes. And again, you guys can go back and check this because we had to basically resubmit to get, we had to resubmit the plans in order to get it zoned as residential for commercial, resident, zones as residential for electrical and plumbing. So, those two elements, as far as it being, again, specked out in the plans and the permit was issued for this project to be, have commercial electrical wiring and commercial plumbing. So, once those were eliminated and we came back in with residential, uh, specs as far as electrical and plumbing went, it got me within budget. But then, the, uh, the French doors, as far as the balcony goes, the, the French doors here, the, uh, the rod iron, uh, rod iron fence, Juliet fence, uh, the metal cornices around the building and even the wrapping of the building and a number of windows, by, again, eliminating those, that's what pretty much got me to where I am right now.
Okay. So, I, I, I know. Okay, so, I, I know where you're going with, with all this. Did the architect, do you have an architect?
Yeah.
Did they develop detailed plans and specs?
Mm-hmm.
At what point?
Well, and as far as-
Before you went out to bid?
No, when I, when I went out to bid, the first bid that I got in order to secure funding was, was a, uh, a bid from Overland, but that was prior to the city issuing the permits, it was not an approved set.
But it, okay, wasn't, so wasn't, they didn't, you didn't, they didn't bid out the complete detailed plans and specs? It was an estimate?
Well, it was, it was a full set of plans, you know, it, it was nothing basically-
From Overland?
Yeah.
They gave you, they, why didn't you hold them to that, then?
Well, we didn't-
The plans, I, if I understand you, the plans you gave to Overland were not the, the plans that the city approved?
They were not approved.
That's what I'm getting at.
Right.
Okay. But you should have done that ahead of time,
Mm-hmm.
instead of after the fact. Then you could have gone to front porch and gotten the right amount of money that you needed, I think, maybe not, I don't know. I don't know what, what their funding's like, but you could have gotten the money that way. So, that's why I say you put the cart before the horse.
I fully accept that responsibility.
I think asking for forgiveness to something that I think we've already looked at.
Well, the, the level of forgiveness that I'm asking for is that every, and I mean, again, apologizing to the Department of Planning, if it has appeared as though, and you all too, for voting on behalf, voting on that P U R, and if it appeared as though I thumbed my nose at you all and said, hey, this is what I'm gonna do. The minute that I told the architect, hey, I need you to basically eliminate the number of windows, so I can resubmit to S, S C, S, C S, S C S, to reconfigure the window openings, should have said, hey, Don, you cannot do this without planning approving it. And I, I would have stopped right then and there.
They would have advised you that, but you're the owner, you're the developer, so it's on you.
No doubt, and I, and I, and I'm completely taking that, but I'm just, again, wanting to emphasize to you all, this was not anything, and I'll put it to you this way. There's no way that if I, if I knew that the P U R was law, if I understood that, that where you cannot make any changes to this without the planning board and city council or the planning department approving it, I never would have did it, because it's not like I can hide a three-story building, I can't hide. And, and if I, and I thank the opposition, because if they, if we never would have gotten here today, I would have proceeded as, as, as planned, the building would have been built totally different than, you know, what was approved. I would never, I, we'd be here all over again with a complete building, and there's no way I would have gotten a certificate of occupancy,
Right.
and there's no telling where we would be. So, again, things happen for a reason.
The confusion seems to be between the, the original plans and the secondary plans.
Yes, sir.
Why did they change? And, and you're, you're talking about windows that are occurring where there's stairs and electrical? Well, who's this architect that's not coordinating all of those things? All of those things are to be coordinated in advance on your final plans.
He, uh, we, we, uh, I'll put it to you this way. We, we had twenty-one requests for information just from the lumber company. When, when, when we were applying for the permit, one of the issues that we had with, from, uh, comments rather, that we had from planning was, you guys don't have the dimensions. There were so many issues that we had with just getting the permit issued, which was a red flag to me, but again, you know, I paid a fair price, but I don't think these guys really thought that I was even gonna pull this off, to be quite honest with you. So, it's day and night as far as permitting process, that we, as far as the plans being approved for thirty-two, thirty-three, twenty-four, which is what we're talking about now, versus thirty-two oh four. Those plans are solid, we've, we've not had any comments come back on those. I mean, we've had comments, but not major comments.
What, what changed between the, the plans that Overland gave you pricing on and the next set of plans when you got the one, the, the one point six million? What changed?
Uh, we dropped the, uh, we pulled out the commercial plumbing, and we pulled out the commercial electrical. Those were the main two things that drove-
But you said that the, that the Overland had complete plans.
Yeah, they did, but that, this is the bid that they gave me. They gave me a bid for seven, seven thirty-two, I'm right on the dot.
I'm not understanding why you didn't just hold them to that price.
Well, but the, the way, I'm, alright, if I understand, the plans you gave to Overland were not the approved plans from the city?
No.
So, when you got the approved plans from the city, you went out for your other bids with those plans?
Yes.
And that's when you were getting the one point two and the nine hundred and stuff?
Yes.
But who put the commercial electrical design in there?
The architect. And we resubmitted to the city once again, an individual electrician called me and said, hey, are you wanting me to bid this, is this a residential or a commercial building? And I said, this is residential, and we resubmitted and had the plans, that we submitted updated plans to have everything wired as commercial, elec, I mean, residential, electrical and plumbing. So, go ahead, sir.
I don't know, just listening, Don, I, I feel like, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do anything to make this more difficult for you, but as Mike Pate and Dave Rosacher just said, you, 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 you got the cart, the horse in front of the, uh, the cart in front of the horse, and, and you didn't go through things correctly. And I'm just sitting here thinking, God, how do we help this project and do it? You had a set of approved plans, and you decided not to follow those approved plans. I get the reason, the cost, but I, I don't, I don't know how to say it, I hate, I don't wanna, I don't know, it's like we're between a rock and a hard place, I don't wanna do anything to, you made a mistake.
Yeah, no doubt, and it, and it was, it was, it was on the job training, I mean, I, I, I'm sure, I've, I've looked at the bios of several of, of the individuals on this board, they're developers as well. I mean, we, we all don't come out of the park hitting home runs immediately when we step up the plate.
Our, our problem is, is what do we say to the next guy that made a mistake, and the next guy, and the next guy? It, it's,
Well, we're here-
It puts us in, it's putting us in a bad spot.
I, I understand, and, and, and again, I, I read the letter, that one of the people that opposes this project is dumb, but, you know, again, as you said, you don't wanna make a bad situation worse, right? I, as I said, I am at least seventy percent of the way through completing this project with all fun, with all funds in place, uh, to finish the project, which I can prove that. So, I'm just looking to kind of come to an agreement with planning to say, okay, well, well, find me, versus saying to me, you need to take everything down and replace it, find me, versus doing that, because, I mean, that, that's just extreme, I guess, is the way that I put it. I'm, I'm gonna put it to you, find me.
You can complete this, but not with, according to the plans that were stamped and approved, that you knew you had to do it that way. And you can, you can complete this with a prod, with a product that doesn't match the neighborhood, and you got people in the neighborhood that were expecting the project to be done, it's-
So, here, here's-
Let me, let me, I'm gonna chime in here. I'm just gonna make, Don, I'm gonna make it clear that staff couldn't administratively give you permission to change the plans. I just wanna make that clear.
Yeah, no doubt.
I think I just heard that staff wouldn't.
No, 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 no.
Let me finish. We, we can't administratively change a plan when it's, when that, when it's so different from the originally approved plan that this board recommends to city council.
Okay.
I just wanna make that clear, that's all I wanna say.
I, I completely understand that, I completely understand it.
Situation is, you, you come to, to the city with a P U R, and that, that's to benefit you, to, to be able to benefit the community that we can do this development, but that P U R comes with requirements. And you have to meet those requirements. And that's the problem now, is you're trying to bend those away from those requirements, and that, we can't allow that.
Okay.
There, there are certain parameters that the city's willing to work with you on some mi- minute details, but to, to just carte blanche change the entire project, just because the costs don't work, it, you're too far down the line for that.
Yeah, no doubt.
So, we can't sit here and just give you a blessing on all these changes. So, what we're, what, what we're gonna have to do is, is probably what, I mean, I'm not voting for this, for everybody here, but to vote for a denial at this point, and you're gonna have to go back to try to find a way to make this work. Your two choices are comply with the P U R, or withdraw the P R, P U R, and just try to develop it, uh, on a normal manner. That's, that's my feeling where you are.
What, what I, if I could make a recommendation, uh, how about we keep it moving? We haven't even got to proponents or opponents yet, so, I mean, we can always call Don back up, and I, that might just be-
A question for him, just, sorry.
Sure, no.
What, what's the funding gap between where you're at today and to get to the approved plans?
That may all, may also have to consider some retrofitting.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
What's that number?
We're, we're at about, probably, I'd say anywhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, and that's-
To, to finish, to, to get to what was approved by this board?
Yeah.
Because it, it sounds, it sounds like the gap is the seven thirty-two, seven hundred thirty-two thousand and the one point two, excluding any retrofitting.
Well, at this point, I'm sitting on a hundred and forty-eight. I guess the way I'm doing my math is that I have a hundred and forty-eight thousand left to complete this project.
Now, my question is, how much do you need to get to, to finish the approved plans?
An additional two hundred to about two hundred and fifty thousand, on top of the one forty-eight.
Well, that math, that doesn't add up.
Then if your, if your, if your bids were one point two million plus whatever retrofitting needs to be done, you've got a hundred and forty-eight thousand, you've spent how much, five hundred and-
Five forty-eight.
Five forty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
How are you gonna get to the million two?
Well, I'm, it's not about, it's not, it's not a matter of now, I'm the G C, so it's not a matter of me having to get to that number. Right now, it's just a matter of looking at what I do have to complete the project, and then additionally going back in and paying my guys to come in and remove the entire brick facade that we have up now, remove all the siding, and then come back in and cut holes for the windows, and again, like I said, I can show a video that points, shows you that these, some of these windows are just not useful for their purpose, as, at all.
So, Don, is there a finance, a financing pathway to the approved plan?
No, I mean, I can't, this is, this is, again, it's, it's affordable housing. I can't go to anyone and ask for two hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand at seven percent, and basically have the projects remain afloat or pay for itself, at all.
Okay. Let, let's continue on here. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Barbara Ingram. My address is seventy-five seventeen North Eighty-Eighth Avenue. Uh, my company is Rare Bird Innovations. I'm the designer for the similar project at thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. Um, of course, we've tried to learn from, you know, some of the faux pas, you might say, on thirty-three and at the other project. Um, however, um, in conversations with Don, my understanding is that he's willing to add additional, um, windows where it's feasible, where it makes sense, or, or as the board or the planning department requires. And, um, in my review of the project, because I studied the design um, for the Sixteenth and Emmett project before I designed the project at thirty-two oh four, and so we've made modifications, and we, um, tried to improve the building design. And so, um, from what I can see from the project at, uh, Sixteenth and Emmett, um, I certainly understand why Don deleted some of the windows. However, um, I believe he is willing to, um, cut new openings and add additional windows. Uh, in my opinion, um, that's not a major plan, uh, change. It just has to do with openings. And so, I don't think the, the fact is that he did not follow the plans, the fact is that he, uh, deleted windows and openings. And so, um, I would recommend that, um, you know, the planning department sits down with him again and just says, we need to add some of these windows back, some of these detailings. Uh, we have a similar design with the corners around the, uh, top of the, um, building, except it's, um, wood framed and it's ephes, opposed to metal or whatever the other architect said. And once again, uh, Don would be, is a G C for this project as well. As far as the design of the project, I find that it's a, a more urban, more modern style that may attract um, the yuppies or younger families, and that, as you know, the Sixteenth Street corridor has a lot of vacant, um, properties. And I believe that, from my understanding, that what the city's hoping to do is encourage developers, um, you know, small and large, to come in and make a difference in the community. And I see that that is what, uh, is driving Don and has driven him to, um, do these projects. And I would, excuse me, ask that you would encourage him and other, um, developers, you know, continue to do that. Of course, you need to follow procedures. And, uh, I'm so glad I had an opportunity to meet Don, and it was just, you know, a few months ago when I started on this project. And what I really appreciate also is Michael Carter and, and all of the folks in planning, um, being open, um, to my questions and that. So, I'm, I'm a very conscientious, conscientious, uh, designer, and so, um, you don't always find that. And so, the previous designer, um, you know, should have been, uh, more involved, but for whatever reason, they were not. And so, that would only be my, uh, comment to you in encouragement, um, that we kinda step back and look at where the project is. It is not that he didn't follow the plans. He was given misinformation in that the commercial, uh, plumbing and, um, electrical was in the documents that were submitted, therefore, the estimate came in way above what it should have been. And before they installed all that, you know, thank goodness, he was able to correct that. And so, um, you know, unfortunate, uh, unfortunately, he is where he is right now. However, I think it's still a good project. I think that, uh, modifications can be made to make the building look as close to the original design as possible. Um, going forward, I, I'm looking forward to and have enjoyed working with Don, and I believe we do have a, um, a better project, um, that meets the city's requirements at thirty-two oh four. Thanks for listening.
Just real quick here, just so, just, you know, I'm looking at the, at the packet here, and, and there are a lot more things that need to be done other than the windows, and I don't know if you have the, the packet with you, but there's all sorts of masonry, make, common masonry details that need to be done, uh, residential details that need to be done, uh, to make in compliance with the original plans. It's not just the windows, okay? So, study it, understand exactly what the city's requiring, and that, that's what you've gotta comply with. Okay, it's in the, it's in the packet. Did you get a copy of the packet?
I did not.
Okay.
I did not, um-
And I'm sure the planning department's actually articulated that as well to you, anyway.
And I, my understanding is that Don is willing to do, uh, what is necessary to move forward. My understanding was that some modifications were made so that, uh, in some cases, he could use, um, siding of a different color. And, um, and so that means that some of the details will change regarding that. So, anyway, thought I'd add my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
My name is Cheryl. Cheryl Weston, um, one eight, one one, Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight, one one zero. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak. As I stated before, on the other project, I was supporter of Donald. He grew up right down the street from me. I considered him to be my foster son, adopted son. My son and him were like this. He was in my son's wedding, my son was in his wedding, I attended his wedding, went out of town. When this project started, Don knows I was in full support of Don and what he was attempting to do, because I was seeing, what I saw was the rendering for this, this site, right here. That's what I saw. I was very supportive of him. I encouraged him, I don't know who, the high tower or what, but I encouraged him, Don, you're smart, you go after the contractor's license. I've been involved in contracting, had a construction company. I know that he was smart enough, you could get your A, you'd be your own contractor, you'd be your own G C, and he went after it. I encouraged him to apply for the grants. I encouraged him to get his corporation and his business set up. Don knows this. I've been totally, fully support, but I'm not in support of- Don knows this. I've been totally, fully support. But I'm not in support of what he attempted to do. And I cannot, it's just like a parent, you, most all of you are probably parents. When your child is wrong, your child is wrong. And I, as someone said over here, he has to learn. Maybe he didn't come out hitting this, a full run, but that's part of being in business. It was said, you had, you gave the city a plan. You cannot, and if you took your license and your test, you cannot just go in and willy-wham and make changes. There is also, he hasn't made, it's in the packet. So I didn't bring all those pictures. But in the packet, he already asked for a change. So to say that you did not know, that is not correct. You had to have known when you went in to ask. This plan, yes. This, no. This is more about when, not just windows. Look at it. You, you've got it in your plan. You're smart if you could know it. This is not just about windows, Don. And as someone said up there, if you make an exception for one, what about the next person that comes up and asks for that? You can't do it. There are certain rules and regulations that have to be followed. And I cannot, as a, as a person and, and in that neighborhood, I do not like that. I do not want to live in that, and I don't think any of you would want to live around that. When you look at this, Don, there's the plan. That's what we were expecting. That's what I supported. And I still support that. You look at that, that, I told him, I thought that rendering, those, the, the pa- uh, balconies, the French doors, everything, that would set that corner off. I mean, it would just be beautiful. And he said, that's what he's gonna put on, down on a block away. Full support.
Mrs. Weston, just for the record, were you a part, weren't you a part of the opposition?
I was a part of the opposition and as I stated then, the reasons why.
When we reviewed the renderings for this-
For, no, not for this. I was-
No, 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 not, I'm saying the, the rendering that you're now saying that-
No, no. I was opposition for thirty-two oh four North Sixteen, if it was going to look like thirty-four, Sixteenth and Emmett. No, I have been supportive of him and, and I'm still supportive of this-
Of this one here?
In the city.
Project is not up to you, yes?
It's not in the P U R. When I had that and I said, that is not compatible with the neighborhood. And you guys have all received packets from the city, um, I think Jed was his name, um, that clearly showed it could be. And the original that would have proved would have been. It would have been very similar to the building that's directly across the street. And all I'm saying is, I, I, I hate it, but it's more about not just the windows. You have to follow the rules, even though you don't like it. And I'm not sure about his math, but I know there's new math. But I'm kind of like Mr. Pate. Something isn't clicking here when you got one point two million and you said your bid was seven million, uh, seven hundred some thousand. And to me, we're talking about at least five hundred thousand dollar difference. This is what I did. Because, you know, as a parent, you always try to take and say, how can I support my child to do the right thing? I may not have been as biological, but as I tried to explain to him, I wanted him to succeed. But I don't think you can make changes like this. You can't go and say, I should have went and do. I wasn't thumbing my nose at you. If your contractor, your electrical and your plumbing reduced those costs, then you should have been lower. You're saying you still don't have enough money. But what I did do, Don, I did try to talk to some people that I know that were willing and said, send him to us and we'll try to help him fill that gap. Because it's an organization that does that. But they're not willing to do that. If you're not willing to go by what you set before the board, the board approved, that's what they're willing to work with you on. That's what I can do. But I'm not supportive and I hope this board and I hope his city planning win. You will not approve this unless it goes to the original rendering. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name's Dorothy Thatt. I'm at thirty-two oh seven North Sixteenth Street, across the street from the new proposed place. Uh, I've been in my house for sixty-one years and I love the neighborhood. But I'm saying that an eye for an eye, we do need to follow instructions. And I, I want the developer to make it because we need housing really, really bad. We do. But it needs to be confirmed to where we can live with it. People in the neighborhood should be comfortable. Most of the people are sixty-seven, eighty, ninety years old. They, they can't make those adjustments. We're not happy with the building, but we don't build them. But I wish that Mr. Curry can understand we're not against you. We want you to be a good developer. We want you to do it right, the way they asked you to do it. And if you need the funding, then I think maybe if you could get it and, and modify this building you've got and make it work before you start the other one. I'm not trying to tell you what, I'm just suggesting as an old lady. I'm eighty-three years old. Oh, not to be a mother and then so. But I'm telling you, get it right, the first one, and then go to the next one. Don't try to do two when we haven't got one finished. Let's finish the one-
Ma'am, can you address us, please?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We, we, we need to do the one, get it right, and get it modified if you guys do that, whatever can have to be done to be modified to get it right. And then move to the next. I think one is the, the time. And help him to help himself because he made a mistake. He might admit that. But we know that it needs to be corrected because you can't approve something that is not right. If I bought a, 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 a dress and I had her to make it, and she told me it was sleeve, with sleeves, and I came back with no sleeves and I couldn't have it, that wouldn't be right. The same scenario. So I'm just saying, I want him to make it, but I want it done right. That's all.
Any other opponents? Is that it? Okay, close of public hearing. Don, do you want to come up? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll let the record show that Mike Pate had a meeting and he had to leave, so he has left the chambers.
So, I, I guess my takeaway is that, it's, you know, I got two options, which is stick with the P U R or remove the P U R. And from a financial perspective, I can't complete the project based on the P U R. I'll just be upfront with you right now. I do have the money to complete it based on the, the path that we were on, which it will be done and it will be completed, just depending on what this removal of the P U R process is. But again, as I said, I, I looked at it from the perspective that we had to make any changes prior to the permit being issued. After the permit was issued, it would have been nothing more than for my design team to say, hey, Don, I can't, I, I, I'm not going to give you this new window plan and, because that showed the removal of the balconies and everything. I'm not going to give you that because you can't do it without approval from the planning department and, you know, a vote and whatnot. So I didn't, again, it was not malicious intent in no shape, form, or fashion.
And when you say your design team, who are you referring to?
The architect primarily, uh, Herrera and Associates. So, um, and then what I also keep hearing, and this is, this is, I guess, um, and I guess you can see this, but, so this is, you know, a, again, compatibility in, in that neighborhood. Um, this is a video from Sixteenth and Pinkney, uh, which is one block north of the site going to Sixteenth and Lothrup and then going, uh, which is south and then going to, uh, up Emmett West and up Emmett East. Because I keep hearing everyone say that, you know, again, it has to be compatible, it has to fit with the community. I don't know when the last time any of you have even ventured down there to that area, but this is, this is what, this is the, the community that I'm building in. And, and, and I came, I lived in for six years, a performative years of my life from age six to, sixth grade to twelfth grade. But this is that neighborhood. And again, this is Sixteenth and Pinkney. So now I'm, and this is a house across the street against, that sign on Sixteenth and Pinkney. So everyone's adamant about what I'm, and this is not speaking to planning or the board at all. This is speaking to the community. Everyone's adamant saying that this does not fit. We don't want to drive by this. We don't want to see this. This, this building right here should be condemned and torn down, but it has a keep out sign on it. No one's getting in front of you all and saying, hey, we need to tear this building down. This house across the street from here is missing siding. And this is one block from where I'm building, where I'm making a significant investment in this community. People have told me that I'm crazy for what I'm doing. Like, why are you building over there? If, if, if you have financing to build of this magnitude, why are you, why are you down there in the bottoms, as they call it? Why are you going down there? Because I see the value and, and, and the community means something to me. So now I'm heading south on Sixteenth Street. This is, and, and again, this is a good eleven minutes. So, and I'm just going, this is just semantics because again, I, I know nothing's, I'm not going to be approved to do, proceed in the project as planned. But I just want you all to see this community. And, 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 and also keep in the back of your mind what everyone in opposition has stood up here to say to me. And why they oppose this project. This is this neighborhood. Everyone's talking about combat, compatibility. That this, that this, we don't want to see this in this neighborhood. But yet, you come out of your door every day and you drive up Sixteenth Street and you see this. But you don't want to see new construction because you don't like it.
Don, there's, uh, I'll go ahead.
I think the, the challenge is, sorry, hurry. Uh, we spent a lot of time up in the pre-meeting talk, talking about this and I think for a lot of us, uh, you know, that this like idea that, not this, this kind of reality, I, I kind of get a sense of how we're gonna vote um, into, in, um, kind of concert with the recommendation that the planning board, um, has made, or I'm sorry, the planning department. Um, it, it doesn't feel good to stand in the way or, I mean, not stand in the way, but doing something to infringe upon the, you know, the momentum that you've had as an emerging developer. I think a lot of us want to see you successful, um, myself included. I think the challenge is, I mean, I get the sense of why you showed that video, but I know the city of Omaha, the planning department and this board want to see projects that, you know, add value and investment and it's something that we can all feel good about. Um, and what you, you know, what we have in front of us now is a real diminishment of, of what was approved. And I think that's the challenge. And so, you know, regardless of these comments from your neighbors or the neighbors in the, in the building about, you know, not wanting to drive by what you, what you're developing, um, considering, you know, what you are, I mean, I, I, the, the assumption that I think all of us are coming to as you showed that video to say, there's a lot of deterioration, there's a lot of disinvestment, and what you're doing is an investment. But I think we can also agree that it is, you know, it's a diminishment of, of that. And, and, you know, there, there has to be a, a standard set even in the bottoms. That is a, one of the oldest parts of this city. And there's a lot of people that showed up today that are proud to live there. And you're clearly proud to be from there and to invest in that area. And so I really do hope that you can pull the resources together to find the way to get back on the path to what uh, we've all agreed to previously. Um, and I just wish you the best in that.
Thanks. Well, I mean, I think we're pretty much, you guys are gonna vote in favor of, uh, and in conjunction with the planning board. And the only way I'm gonna be able to get it done is to pull the P U R. So I don't know what that process entails or how to do it, but I can't, I can't finish it. Based on what you all are, because again, this is gonna entail me basically taking down everything that you currently see on the building. Like, as I said, I, I'm willing to add more windows in a different color scheme, but I get what you all are saying. If you allow me to do that, what is that gonna do for other developers? So, you know, it, it, I guess I'm the first to come in with such, uh, such plans that are contrary to what was approved, you know? But I can't, I can't, I can't proceed forward.
I think the takeaway, Don, is that, that in order to do what you're trying to do, and, and I commend you for your attempt to do this, is you have to sequentially go through that. So that by the time you get to the point where you have something approved by the, the city for your P O, P U R, you have to have enough control of your, under, of your numbers so that you know that that's something that will work for you. If it doesn't work at that point, then you cut your losses at that point. And yeah, you're gonna spend some money on design, you're gonna have to spend ton, money on time working with the city to do that. And at that point, once you have approved plan or approved design, so to speak, with the city, and then you have, uh, a, uh, a P U R that will work and design this lock, lockdown, then you can get your financing. And at that point, it just moves forward on the process. You just get your permit and you move forward. And what happened is you got, as you said before, you got the cart before the horse. You got things approved before you had solid numbers on them. And even at that point, you know, maybe you should have gone back and maybe could have gone back with, with, uh, um, Overland and, and try to get their suggestions of ways that you can bring this project in. But, you know, there's some, some real fatal flaws in there when you can't, nobody even knows where the windows belong, based on what's inside. Windows are supposed to be where they belong on the inside. Sometimes you add them on the outside for, for aesthetic effect. But you never put them in front of the electrical, you never put them in front of the stair, unless it's the purpose. But those things are all mixed up in your process. And so at this point, unfortunately, you're a long ways down that path. And you're gonna have to continue to work within that, come up with some sort of a modification to the design that's acceptable to the P U R. Uh, and at that point, see if you can go forward with it.
Well, you mentioned again that I would have, I could, I might have an option to pull from, pull from the P U R, correct?
I'm sorry?
That I don't, that I can pull this project from the P U R. You meant, you said that earlier.
I, I believe that's the process.
Well, that, the idea of that would need to be discussed further, um, among planning staff, our law department. It's not as simple as just saying repealing the P U R. Because the minute that is done, you have a building that does not comply with setbacks, probably impervious coverages. There's a whole, um, set of regulators then that would, you know, become non-compliant. So that is not something that I'm ready to advise on steps forward at this point. We can discuss internally of what that looks like, but I guess I would, I would have to leave it at that unless, you know, Director Fanslaw or Law Department chooses to weigh in at this time. But that's not as easy as just getting rid of it.
Hey, hey, Don. I'll, I'll talk about that process and I'm not gonna say what my opinion's gonna be, but the process would be to have the P U R repealed through the planning board and city council process. If that were to happen, like Eric said, the building is not in conformance with a number of zoning requirements. Your option would have to be to go to the zoning board of appeals to continue your construction.
Okay.
But like I said, there, there's a lot of internal conversations that have to happen about that.
It just re, as both of these are saying, it just depends on the elements of the P U R that, that have already, are in the process of waiving
And your financing.
Regulations for planning, such as setbacks and such. Now that you've already got it in the ground, you're set with that. And, and so depending on the magnitude of those waivers that are, that are inherent with the P U R, that's where you'd have to make a determination whether that's even a viable option.
Hey, Don, you, you know, you, you're beating yourself up, you know, you're kind of getting it from us a little bit, and, and you made a mistake, okay? And we all make mistakes. But I, I, I think another mistake, you might be going down the wrong road is, is calling people opposition. I, I, I know they're against you, the, what you've done in the building, but I also heard two people say they're in, you know, support of you. If, if you can, go back and talk with them. I mean, I, I know you grew up with them, uh, with, with her as, you know, foster mom or, or, you know, uh, not biological mom, but it sounds like they're reaching out to you to try to figure out how to help. Swallow that pride, go back and talk to them, see if there's any way that you can help with this project. And if it's not, then, you know, it's okay. It didn't work out. But, but don't make, you know, capitalize on those mistakes by making another one and not reaching out to people that, that might be able to help.
Right. No doubt. Mr. Moore, um, at the end of the, uh, the first time we crossed paths here, I took your advice. And I had an open house. Instead of going to a coffee shop to meet everyone, I figured, let me bring them to the site, give them a tour and I'll address any questions, uh, in reference to what I'm doing here on Emmett Street. And that was January twenty-seventh, from eleven until two P M. And we advertised it for about a good two weeks straight. Um, Councilwoman Juanita Johnson showed up and we had at least about seventeen, twenty people show up. Uh, the, the, and the reason why I'm using the word opposition is because, you know, you guys say, is there any opposition? So that's the only reason why I'm using that word. So, no, any, any, the two- So no, any, any, the two people that, that stood up here and, and expressed opposition did not show up. So I took your advice, most definitely. Yeah, they did. And so out of that seventeen people, so.
Don?
Yes, sir.
Real quick. If the P U R, uh, if, if none of that's removed, the plans are the plans that stays, what are you going to do with this building? You've got five hundred and.
Forty-eight thousand dollars right now sitting there.
That you're on the hook for.
Yeah. And, and as I said, given interest rates right now, the reason why Front Porch was so attractive, because it was low interest rate loans, one percent. Just, just throughout the course of, you have to keep it affordable for twenty years, one percent. If I go out and start seeking financing to cover the gap, it's going to come in at seven percent. If I'm charged, it's these are three bedrooms, two baths, twelve hundred square feet units. It's going, uh, uh, it's going to come in at fifteen hundred a month per unit. So that's three thousand dollars for the first floor and the second floor. The third floor unit is going to be eighteen hundred, so we're looking at forty, forty-eight hundred a month. My debt service is going to come in at about thirty-two hundred. And we're sitting on an additional, uh, sixteen hundred after that. And that goes back into maintenance and whatnot. So if I go out and take on any additional financing, it's going to come in at a high interest rate. And then at that point, how am I to cover that except for, and I, and I have a job, but again, that's all of my income going to cover the debt service on this. And this, this is not a, a LLC. I'm coming in as a nonprofit, and our mission statement is to build quality, affordable housing. And I, I put the cart before the horse. But yet, you know, it was a situation in which this is, this, this is the timeline, timeframe. So I was racing against a lot of different clocks. Uh, one being how I acquired the land from the land bank. You have a two-year window in which to develop the land. I sat on that lot for one year, waiting for financing opportunities to come around. This year makes my second year, and if I would not have did anything with that, it would have been a situation in which I had to go back to the land bank to discuss them, uh, be handing the deed back over, which they would not have done. But if I didn't have any progress, you know, it would have been a whole nother situation. But safe to say, I've learned from all of these, these pitfalls on this first project to where it's not going to happen on the second one, the third one, and the fourth one going forward. So I, I got to figure it out. I have to. And how, at this point, I don't know, but I know I can't go back, I can't go ask for commercial financing. But now it's, we're, we're stopped. And all I'm asking is that I understand that I made a mistake. I did not adhere to the P U R. And if I would have known that, I, I'm embarrassed right now, for one. And it's not a, a pride thing, but I'm a competitor. I enjoy winning. I enjoy making good decisions. So to actually have to stand here in front of you all and literally know that I messed up, know that the community does not like what they see, given the state of the community, that, that bothers me as well. So I, I got to figure it out. I'll put it to you that way. I have to. I have no choice. But I mean, again, uh, all I was merely asking was that, like, again, allow me to, because like, when, when we left that meeting, Eric, we sat there for at least about a good hour and, you know, kind of brainstorming about what would work and what wouldn't work and whatnot. So, you know, I thought we had come up with it pretty good, and you, and you guys were clear enough to say to me that we're not guaranteed that this would be approved, but let's give it a shot. You know, so I, I guess the way I look at it is that if I would have known then that this was, these were going to be considered major amendments, I probably would have just stopped at that point and, you know, kind of tried to figure it out then versus being in front of you guys now. So, thanks.
Hey, thanks, Don. Anybody else have a comment before we hear from Eric? Eric?
Yeah, so a lot in there. Obviously, we talked extensively in the pre-meeting about this. I don't think I'll ask Jed Moulton to come up. Obviously Jed talked a lot about the design criteria, and he is available for, for questions, talked about compatibility. I think a lot of that's already been covered. So, um, unless you have any specific questions of Jed regarding architecture, uh, we'll leave it at that, and, and I'll just address a few things. Um, regarding Don's last comment, yeah, I mean, these are, these are difficult conversations. It's a difficult situation. After the last planning board, when, you know, during the testimony, it was brought up about concerns about the site, city staff looked into it, just like Don had summarized in his intro. And, um, yeah, we did. We had, we had a long meeting, we had a lot of conversation, ideas, you know? We're not wanting Don to fail, um, you know? But ultimately, when we looked at the plans and what he had indicated, what he was willing to do, and discussed internally with upper management of our department, it was determined that, you know, that is not something that we could support. So, um, unfortunately, that, that has led us here to the major amendment. Um, you know, it's just one tricky thing, and Cheryl Weston said it pretty much verbatim of what we were thinking here internally as far as planning department staff. There was a minor amendment that was approved during the building permit submittal and approval because there were changes to the plan. So the full, you know, what Don is saying, you know, we have a little trouble with that, not knowing that, you know, certain changes, you know, couldn't be made just on the fly. And so, you know, I just wanted to point that out and, and, you know, so, I don't know. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot going on here. There's, there's a lot of parties, there's submittals. But, I mean, ultimately, it, you know, it does lie with, with the approved project and the approved building permit in the, in the minor amendment P U R, which was, had very minor deviation from the original approved plan, you know, by the planning board and city council. So I guess moving forward where we stand, um, your vote today is a recommendation. So if the applicant, um, chooses, if you recommend denial, as the city is recommending, Don could take that forward to the city council. Now, the code does require a super majority vote to override that. So when the planning board recommends denial, it would take, uh, if you had a full body at city council, it'd take five votes to approve, uh, the P U R, uh, major amendment. So he does have that option to pursue. Or if it's recommended denial, he could choose to stop and build what was approved. Either find additional financing or find a way to make that work. And then, like I said a little bit ago, we would have to discuss internally about those next steps as far as a repeal of the P U R. Uh, but yeah, that would, that would have to come back through planning board and city council. And as Dave mentioned, it, it would likely have to involve zoning board of appeals, because that's the only other method to waive regulatory criteria in the R seven district. I don't think I have anything else to add, um, so I'll state the city's recommendation is denial.
Any additional comments?
I, I, sorry. Um, Mike Pate, even though he left, and obviously his vote is, would not go on the record, he, he did, uh, state that he was in opposition. But he supported the denial, I should say.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Is that a long go?
Before I vote, I just want to say, um, good luck to Don, and, uh, this is a good learning opportunity. Um, I would recommend, when you start over again, just have a great team, set your expectations, and you're going to do great. I think you're very capable. That's very clear to everybody on this board. So I just want to state that before I say yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes, I'd also like to state that just, you know, just because you have an obstacle doesn't mean you can't still proceed. So you may have to get a lot harder and do a lot more investigating, different directions, different things. Uh, just don't give up. You've got a lot invested. Got a lot invested, and, and you'll get through this, and you'll learn a lot for the next one. I vote to deny.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just real quick, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna vote to deny also. Um, I've been in your spot, Don, and I, as a contractor, you, I've made mistakes, and you hate it. You just, uh, you can't sleep at night, uh, can't, you can't turn your brain off when you go to bed at night. It just keeps, uh, rolling over in your head. I wish, we, we gotta, I wish there was a way to help you. I guess you're going to have to go through the process and see what happens. But I, I did, I do vote yes to deny.
Denial approved, six to zero.
Okay, agenda item number twenty-two. Case C eight dash twenty-four dash forty, applicant Joni Sturick. Request approval of special use permit to allow small group living, non-disabled in the R four thirty-five district. Location sixteen oh six North Sixtieth Street, and is the applicant here?
And real quick, is your accommodation, is this, do you need to stand or? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joni Sturick, and, um, I was going to try to, sorry, it's my first time doing this. Um, I live at eleven oh two Dillon Drive. And this house is a house that I purchased with my mother, or for my mother, more accurately, in September of twenty twenty-one. And the reason I purchased that home was because she suffered from dementia, and I did a lot of research on senior living, assisted living, memory care. And I moved her out of her two-story home into this home because it was easier, and it was close to me. So, um, I was going to turn that off. Uh, she passed away in November.
Did you put that up again? I, I missed it.
It was just a picture of the front of the house with the driveway. Trying to see how it looks.
Oh, okay.
Good.
All right, thank you.
So she passed away November thirteenth of this year, and I am left trying to decide what do I do with this house. I am a real estate agent. I have been since, um, two thousand and seven, but been in real estate since two thousand and one. I manage, and I'm the team member, team leader for Welcome Home Team at Better Homes and Gardens. And after going through stuff with my mother, I also founded Family Ties Senior Placement Services in May of twenty-two. We had a name change. I won't get into that. Um, in looking through senior placement opportunities, we are very limited in Midtown for affordable senior placements. Um, a trend is going to be, which is very favorable, to have seniors stay in their home within home care, of which a lot of them will be similar to my mother, a Medicaid waiver. Um, where there's cost sharing and/or the cost of care is taken care of until such time they pass away, and we distribute assets. So with this house, I had a couple options. I have rental properties. I could make it a rental. Um, my heart told me not to do that. I would sell it. Or if there was a way to honor my mother, I wanted to do that. I could have made it a rental and leased out rooms and brought in, in home care, um, and gone through the residential permit, uh, for qualifying that as a rental and not have to go through all of this. Uh, when I started the permit, and I'm grateful that I'm just starting this, so if I make mistakes, they can be corrected. Um, today was very humbling. I wanted to name it and get a special, get a permit for an assisted living. And the reason I wanted to do that is because I wanted control over who would be admitted, who the caregivers would be, what type of care. And, um, I, in going through that, and I had spoke to a very helpful person at City Planning. He was like, you don't want to do that. You don't have the numbers. It's not a big enough of a community, because I'm asking for a three or four. And the reason that it's different is Health and Human Services, um, where the state of Nebraska requires, anything over four, or four or more, has to be assisted living. Anything three or fewer requires no certification, nothing at all. I could open up, you know, this, uh, without, I mean, for understanding I'd have a special use permit. I could do that with really no eyes on me from the State Department. That worries me. That worries me as a person who loves seniors and it is in the business to help seniors. Um, so I wanted to do things very much the right way. So hence the special use permit. And when the gentleman called me from the City Planning, he was like, hey, we're not going to do this as an assisted living. You don't want to do that. But we're going to call this a small group home. My stomach sank because there's a connotation as to what a small group home does to a neighborhood. And that was not my intent. So after a very lengthy conversation, and whether it was going to be disabled or non-disabled, it's special use permit as non-disabled. And the only reason for that, from what I was told, is that if I say disabled, only disabled people could occupy the residence. Now, in our procedures that we've submitted to the planning board, it is for seniors only who are needing assistance with daily activities, things such as cooking, laundry, bathing, the things people, you know, when they usually go into an assisted living, it's because they're no longer safe to live on their own. So the vision of what I call the Owl House, because the owl was my mother's favorite animal, is, uh, cost sharing. We're trying to make it affordable for seniors to get great care. And the average cost for an assisted living facility is about seven to eleven thousand dollars with zero level of care. Now, if I could have three people living in this home on Sixth Street, sharing one full-time caregiver, this becomes a lot more affordable for those people. And the magnitude too of having a three resident to one caregiver, truthfully, is unheard of. There are other single-family homes in Omaha that have already been doing this. And this is a trend, kind of like all things with real estate, kind of goes from the coast and it moves in. Due to limited resources in senior living and people looking for options, single-family homes are being converted and will continue to be converted at a higher rate than most people probably haven't on your radar. Um, unfortunately, some of these people pack seniors in homes like they are dorm rooms. And I would challenge you, go look at them. You have two twin beds to a room. You have basements built out. You have about twelve to eighteen seniors in a single-family home. And why? It makes money. That's not the type of care I wanted for my mother, and that's probably not the type of care you would want for yours. So three residents, I put on their four, because of assisted living, but really would be three, to live in a single-family home is not a stretch of the imagination. And there's a lot of talk about parking and congestion on Sixtieth Street. And the reality is, is known in the neighborhood parks on Sixtieth Street. And the reason why? Cars fly down that street, and there's a speed bump just north of this home that it seems like, I don't know, two out of five people totally miss. And you can hear it, because you, you hear them launch, right, and they crash down. That is the biggest nuisance on Sixtieth Street, and I didn't like it when we bought the house, and I do not like it today. But never at any time have we been a congestion issue with my mother, who, we had family coming and going. We had a full-time caregiver. She really had twenty-four-hour care near end of life from September first until she passed away November thirteenth. If there were ever two cars in that driveway, it was minimal. In fact, on the Google photo, I'm like, I wonder just what it looked like. It's one car in the garage. It was a caregiver who helped my mother for two years named Dee. And had I not had told anyone in the neighborhood that she was in there, really, and no one would know, she was in there pretty much, you know, on hospice care for over a year. And I would love to say, and I would love for it to be true, that having three seniors in there is going to cause a congestion issue. I challenge you to go to a senior community and see how often seniors are visited. But this house does have a two-car garage, of which in the procedures, a caregiver will park in the garage at all times, which opens up the rest, the other side of the garage, and a full two-car driveway that easily fits four cars. for residents to have visitors come and go. And they would be asked to park in the driveway. In my wildest of dreams, I wouldn't have said because it would cause congestion. I would say because I don't want your car to get hit going over the speed bump. I do know that there was a letter circulated around the neighborhood in opposition to it, and I understand it. I, I was hesitant to being called a small group home and maybe what the perception is of that. And I did try to go around and talk to neighbors. It was not that I didn't, but as I was doing that and distributing flyers, we had a couple back-to-back blizzards. And we couldn't leave the flyers and the doorknobs like we wanted to. So in trying to talk to a few people, I really was kind of surprised when I was told last week about, you know, the letter going around in opposition. But I specifically want to address two things. One, to say that my mother created congestion or traffic on Sixtieth Street is absolutely asinine. There's one car in the driveway. And if I ever parked on the street, it was because I would maybe remove something. But never was it there more than five minutes. You can, you can park on the east side of Sixtieth Street. You cannot park, there's a no parking sign directly in front of my mother's house on the west side, but you can park further north or further south and then down on Seward Street. So there is parking, but there's not west-side parking directly in front of the house. The last item on the flyer that was circulated referenced the caregivers that I had hired. First and foremost, I hired a company to take care of my mother. Who they sent out, I had a vet. And there were a few people that were very much asked quickly to leave and never come back. But I also had a ring doorbell on that. And I watched it and I was back and forth several times throughout the day. I do spot checks because, well, my mom was being taken care of by them. Never did I see a domestic disturbance, never did I see anyone smoking marijuana or having lights shown in people's houses. I find that interesting when the caregiver shift changeover was seven PM and eight AM. Even if lights were shining in my driveway pointing to someone's house, that would have been minimal and that would have definitely not been an issue at say like three AM. Most people aren't paying attention to lights outside at seven o'clock at night or eight o'clock in the morning. But the thing that really is the epitome of the last complaint in that, and I will say it was one for me, was the license plates of my caregiver Jewel Williams. When she first started to take care of my mother, she had a license plate, she has a license plate that says nude girls. And I pulled up to the house and I'm like, what is this? So I went in and I asked, I'm like, so Jewel, I gotta ask what her license plate's all about. Now, she is a seventeen, seventy-two-year-old, very devout Christian woman who has been a caregiver her entire life. She looked at me utterly appalled and she's like, my husband's name is Nudie and I'm his girl. And I'm like, hmm, so your license plate? She's like, is that why I get weird looks at the stoplight? I'm like, hmm, yes Jewel, that's why. So sometimes we make assumptions about things, what things are from what we think that they are, not actually what they are. I've invited everyone to call me with questions. I've invited to have conversations prior to this. And I haven't had them. So I would ask that maybe, you know, you consider what the facts are about it and not maybe what the perception is of what a small group home is or what someone's license plate is, because you're probably wrong.
Any other proponents?
Oh, I did have a letter, sorry. Another neighbor, Becky Bulastry, sent a response to the letter that was circulated. She wasn't able to be here today, I do have a copy of it if you need it. She is in full support of it. And some of the other neighbors too, that I had talked to in full support of it, but they weren't able to be here.
Thank you. Any other proponents saying none, or are there any opponents?
My name is Deborah Smith and I'm a homeowner residing at six zero zero seven Seward Street. I've lived there for twenty-four years. I've recently retired and I plan to stay in the neighborhood. I love my home, I love the area, I love my neighbors. So over the years I've been there, I've seen a significant increase in rental homes in my neighborhood where owners do not live on-site. Along with that, there's less attention paid to upkeep of the property. So I'm disappointed in that. So my feeling about rental homes, I'm not in support of them. I see a place where they can be, but I find it disappointing with a higher number of them than seems like homeowners. So I oppose this. I had the question too about the non-disabled, what that meant. Because in my mind, as it applies to senior residents, aging in place, if that's what they believe, the physical and mental capacity to decline over time, which requires increased assistance as they become less able. So that's a comment from me on that one. The concern, the property is a rental, it'll be used as a business. It's brand new, we have no idea of the viability of the business, not yet established, so it may not succeed. So if something happens and they can't continue with the business, the special permit remains with the property. Though anyone else can come in and assume the small group living permit. Can be a different type of group home, possible increase in residents who have vehicles, whereas we've been assured that seniors who will be there will not have vehicles. Increase in parking issues. And then the neighbor there will not have any voice over the future of people who might acquire the permit for small groups. In reading the information that was sent to me, the terms of aging in place in assisted living I've used sometimes was confusing to me toward the actual nature. My idea of assisted living and what being portrayed, I'm confused about what really will be provided there. In the operating agreement, the services listed that suggest that the day-to-day services may require additional providers to the one caregiver companion, with the potential impact of parking. And I'm referring to B, C, and D and that operator. And the applicant, I came with the understanding the maximum are going to be for visitors, for residents. However, the applicant indicates that there will be four visitors maximum daily to this home. They also have indicates, their agreement, that they can arrange for third-party services to attend to residents' needs. Again, that more people come into the home outside of the four visitors a day, one visit per resident could impact parking. A question I had, will hospice be a service on-site? Definitely understandable need for these residents. That can impact parking, length of time vehicles may be there. I have personal experience with my father in his last two years of his life. And we were able to keep him in his home and we had services coming to our home. He had a variety of services, meals on wheels, OT and PT services, visiting nurse, lab services for blood draws, bath aids, companion giver for two-hour slot, housekeeping, oxygen deliveries. So that was a lot of, it was like a revolving door with that. But the services really helped him staying at home. So the other concern, what are the liability issues for neighbors? I mean, we're walking by, we see someone maybe far in the front property, the desire would be to go and assist, but that's a business, so there's liabilities that may be involved in there. So we feel that there's more questions than answers. I have not had any flyers or any information from the applicant. My first one was with the information that came from the planning department and I saw that letter. So my traffic and parking concerns, I live on Seward Street, so Sixth Street is busy. It runs from North Omaha to our neighborhood to U and O and downtown. So there are periods of time when it can be busy there. No sidewalks, so more pedestrians are now walking Sixth Street. We have to walk around parked vehicles. In my experience, I've had a few close calls trying to step out and go around car and an oncoming traffic coming. With my hearing loss, I can't hear where sound is coming from as far as vehicles coming, so I can't determine. So I have to be more visual to watch for it. You mentioned the parking signs in front of the home, that's there. No parking directly there. We've had abandoned cars on Seward Street periodically. So how do we determine the cars connected to that property versus somebody? For example, if they had a, their car walked down and they couldn't get a start or they had to live up there for a few days, how do we know what the car that goes to that house versus an abandoned vehicle? The concern of being a business, they have to have deliveries. You need to provide meals for the residents. So there are deliveries that are going to be coming in for that. Family members will come and give medication. My father had three to four times a day of medication. So those family members who are coming, will be coming more than once a day. We are limited on Seward Street to parking on the south side only and we need to keep in mind that the stop sign, you're gonna be fifteen feet behind. Oftentimes people are parked too close to that stop sign and we have difficulty getting out of our street to get on Sixth. And we can't see the oncoming traffic that wants to turn onto Seward. And then my current neighbor across the street from me who has a rental home, two apartments, he lives in the bottom, he has rentals on the top. At any point in time, for those ones that alone, there can be zero to two vehicles. Those vehicles park on the street, they're in my house, in front of my house or in the property down from me. He himself, the owner, has four personal vehicles and they do fit in the driveway, but he oftentimes has at least two of them parked on the street. So between his house only, there's up to four vehicles that are in front of my house or the neighbor to the east of me. So we already are having difficulty with parking accessibility just for visitors coming to our home, many people coming to service our homes. And so for that reason, we just feel like that this would not be a safe, a big safety concern for both pedestrians and drivers. We conclude that the conditions do not safely support a business of this nature for both neighbors, those visiting property. And those people who are coming to go to that property have to walk on Sixth Street who access it, they can't be cut into neighbor's yard, which I'm sure they respect that. But their safety could be an issue as well. So that's my comment, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Done, okay.
Any other opponents?
Good afternoon. And just, this should only take maybe two or three minutes. I'm just gonna go ahead and read from the document. I'll go ahead and state that, yep. My name is Philip Taylor and I live at one six zero nine North Sixtieth Street, directly across from the property proposal. I've been a member of this neighborhood ever since my grandmother sold this property to me as she moved into an assisted living care over twenty-four years ago. And I now live at this property with my own family. And like many of my neighbors, I'm an invested citizen of this neighborhood who wants to see our neighborhood stay safe. Everyone agrees all seniors deserve licensed high-qual or high-quality healthcare assistance in a safe setting. The idea of offering healthcare assistance to any citizen is paramount indefinitely in my mind. There is no argument against that. Unfortunately, this proposal's site location, I feel, puts its residents, neighborhood, and community members at a possible greater risk. I am opposed to the proposal site of sixteen oh six North Sixtieth being approved as a special use permit to allow small group living non-disabled in the R four thirty-five single-family residential district based on safety concerns regarding pedestrian vehicular traffic, parking zoning violations, site management, and residential neighborhood integrity, commercial-based site or rural setting, you know, may be a safer consideration. Some of the risks and concerns of this proposal. No formal meeting was established, held, or effectively communicated by the applicant to directly discuss how this would impact the neighborhood. Notification neighbor letter that's in the permit was not received by affected neighbors. The proposal would violate current residential zoning laws to their businesses within six hundred feet. The nature of this business would require a commercial industry-style dumpster that would impede driveway parking and neighborhood park and properties, plus the noise congestion, things of that nature. Sixtieth Street's now a mid-down corridor, if you will, from North Omaha and traffic is significantly increased. Motorists are frequently seen going over the speed limit. Fifteen mile-per-hour speed bump is not adhered to unfortunately. And a four-way stop at Sixtieth and Western was recently installed, I believe in December of two thousand and twenty-three, and it mitigates some traffic, but it may not be effective. There are no sidewalks on Sixtieth Street, pedestrian vehicular traffic is very high. The addition of any parking will create unnecessary safety risks, I feel. Due to prohibited parking on Sixtieth West Side, this will move parking to the off-street and to the east side, thus blocking views of incoming traffic in both directions from multiple neighbors on this side. Property is proposed to be turned into a rental that'll be used as a business. Residential home care, I don't know if I'm terming that correctly, but it's an over a hundred and thirty billion-dollar industry in two thousand and twenty-three and it's very lucrative. Money should not be the motivation here. Traffic and parking needs increase, which causes unsafe congestion in the area. This business has only been open, I believe, for three months, November sixth of two thousand and twenty-three. More time may be needed to judge whether or not this is a successful business within a residential area. A special permit will remain through ownership and connected to the land. The neighborhood will have no say in future utilizations. Also, previously hired caregivers at sixteen oh six North Sixtieth Street behavior was of a concern. Witnessing caregivers smoking marijuana in the driveway and yard. Witnessing two caregivers in domestic argument. Unknown vehicles would routinely back into the driveway with lights on, shining house, lights on my house with music sometimes so loud it would shake or vibrate my house. A caregiver or other contacted neighbor to assist with patient in uncomfortable position at one point. Full day-to-day operations of the proposed business have not been effectively shared with the neighborhood and one person unlicensed to care up to four people, non-disabled, was a concern for me. These are some of the pictures that I took just of my neighborhood, just so you could kind of see, and I did kind of share these with you. This is my own camera and, you know, my own vehicle. This is the view looking south on my street. Of course, if I'm in a vehicle, I may be sitting even lower. It does, just one car can impair view of oncoming traffic on a very busy street. This is the view looking north. As you can see, it does take kind of a full view or kind of blocks, makes a major obstruction to that area. There are no sidewalks, as I mentioned earlier, and so this is just a side view of really how close you are to like my property here. There's not a whole lot of room to walk, so you need to walk in the street. This is a view of the, of the east side of Sixtieth Street, right in front of my property. This is the no parking sign that's there. There are three consecutive no parking signs that are there on that property. As you can see here, this is the east side of Sixtieth. And so all the parking will pretty much be moved off-street and I think it states that in the permit too. This is a clear view of what the street looks like as well. Thank you for your time, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Alexei Krasnaslavatsky and my wife is also in the room today.
Could you say your name again?
Alexei Krasnaslavatsky. Alexei Krasnaslavatsky. And my wife is in the room today with me. We reside at sixteen oh two North Sixtieth Street, which is next door to a proposal location, and we own this house since two thousand and eight. I believe we drafted the letter and we submitted it with the city, so each member, I hope, had a chance to look at it. I'm up here today to express our opposition to the approval of a special use permit based on the following reasons. Reason number one, high density small group homes in the neighborhood. Our neighborhood already has a small group home located less than six hundred Our neighborhood already has a small group home located less than six hundred feet of the proposed location. And according to municipal code, section fifty-five dash seven six three D one, the distance between small group living use and any previously existing small group living use shall be at least six hundred feet. So we believe establishment of a small group home at this location will violate the said ordinance. Reason number two, value of the neighborhood's properties. We contend that the establishment of this small group home will indeed affect the marketability of properties in the neighborhood. And the application arguments lack substantive evidence beyond the following statement. This home will not detract from the marketability of my neighbor's homes. However, the presence of a group home will undeniably have an effect on homes' marketability, especially in a biased market like this one. Reason number three, lack of detailed statement describing operating characteristics of proposed use. The statement is required by section fifty-five dash eight-eight-four, section D five of the code. An operating agreement that's attached to the application provides a vague description of the operating characteristics. We are particularly concerned with the following operating characteristics and provision of services. Number one, undefined number of maximum occupants. undefined additional maximum personnel. Lack of family visitation structure. I believe that maximum occupants and maximum personnel were covered by other opponents, so I will skip the details. But the reason three, lack of family visitation structure, the application describes visits sporadic, indicating a lack of visitation structure. And so it's really, really vague in identifying the maximum number of visitors allowed at a time. For instance, it states one person had one visitor a day. It also raises questions about the protocol if there are multiple visitors per day or if one family arrives as a group using separate vehicles. So undefined maximum number of occupants, personnel, and visitors suggests major unpredictability in traffic and parking. Which then leads me to the next issue, and that is increase in traffic volume, parking issues, possible fire and pedestrian safety risks. I will not repeat what other opponents were saying about Sixtieth Street already experiencing heavy traffic. And we have no doubt that there will be parking on the Sixtieth Street in front of the neighboring houses because the parking in front of the proposed location is prohibited by the city due to a street bump. This will definitely congest vehicular traffic, create safety risk for increased number of pedestrians that utilize the street because there are no sidewalks. Will reduce street visibility, endanger neighboring residents operating or riding in their own cars. Next, the congestion of parked vehicles may be a fire code violation as it will block the street and the driveways. Particularly, the situation will create unnecessary obstacles for public safety vehicles attempting to access the house in question as well as neighboring houses. Next, lack of detailed description of hiring procedures, background checks, and operation manual. This is especially concerning in the light of disturbing incidents witnessed by neighbors. I will not list them, they're in the letter. And since the applicant does not reside in the house, either had no control over these occurrences or choose not to intervene. Either way, it suggests a lack of regulatory commitment. And if this were to persist in the management of the proposed small group home, it would have negative effects on both residents and neighboring homeowners. Safety and welfare of residents of the neighborhood. This business as described suggests high influx of clients, staff, and third-party service providers. New residents on a rolling basis, caregivers, nurses, family members to administer medicine, medical service providers, meal providers, and family visitors. And we have already seen an escalation in criminal activity due to the midtown corridor status acquired by the Sixtieth Street. So in the last few years, our property alone has been the target of a few instances of crimes listed in the letter. So operation of the proposed business raises concerns regarding the overall security and well-being of our community. Next, the property owner will not reside at the premises. So it looks like it's a conversion of a house into a commercial use property where the business will prioritize profit over safety, welfare, appeal, marketability of the neighborhood. It will certainly impact aesthetic appeal and market value of the house. Reason number four, lack of history of the business. As Mr. Taylor already stated, the business is recent. And there was no history provided with this application. Number five, zoning alternation and potential repurposes of the business. Again, without repeating everybody, I would like to say that the code, municipal code, states that this permit will run with the land and shall continue to be valid upon change of ownership, which is a major concern. Given our reasoning about the potential negative impact of the proposed small group home on the neighborhood. The immediate concerns are how the transfer of this permit to a new ownership will impact the neighborhood and the possibility of repurposing the permit to host groups other than seniors or even changing the nature of the business entirely. And the last one that is titled Keeping a Promise, but it really has to do with the failure to inform neighboring residents of the intent to seek a special use permit, which reflects, in my opinion, lack of consideration. We have been neighbors for decades and welcomed the applicant as a neighbor when she purchased the house in two thousand twenty-one and tried to help in whatever way we could when applicant's mother lived in the house. However, it is disheartening to read that the applicant expresses assurance in the application of hand-delivering a letter to neighbors, and it is attached to the application, that such correspondence was never received by any neighbor. This really casts doubt on the accountability of the applicant and as a result, on the scope and accountability of proposed business. To finish, because of all of the above reasoning, we oppose the approval of a special use permit to allow Midtown Matters Rental Division doing business as our house to establish a small group home at sixteen oh six North Sixtieth Street in Omaha. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing.
Can I respond?
Yes.
To address some of those questions, sorry, you have Joni, Joni Sturck, eleven oh two Dillon Drive. With regards to a couple of questions, why I did not put limitations on number of visitors is because there's no way I could. I would hope that we have families being visited several times. And if we do, our part driveway alone allows for four cars. I will have three residences, so two come, three come. We have parking where the street is not going to be an issue. At least definitely not an issue as a long-term issue. If it's sporadic, kind of like when I would park out on the street and like move cars around, I could see that happening. But as an ongoing congestion, traffic, safety violation, I just don't see that. Me making this a group home is not changing the structure of the neighborhood. We all bought into it, knowing that was a busy street, knowing there was no sidewalks. I personally walk on that sidewalk, too, because my house is a two-minute drive away, which is very intentional as to why I bought it where I did. I did not put limitations on visitors or the types of visitors with regards to care, because each person is different. You had mentioned needing, your dad needed medications four times a day, and that might very well be true. With the onsite caregivers and how their licensing works is they cannot, they cannot administer medications by like filling them, you know, doing a refill for like, say, pulling a syringe. But a CNA can do that, and at the direction of the family, the onsite caregiver can administer that medication. So a family member does not have to come back and forth, and that will be in our ongoing family partnerships that we have with them. So I did not say we're only going to have, you know, two additional nurses because every resident could have their own nurse, it could be three different nurses. But the likelihood of them coming and staying simultaneously all day, all night is inconceivable. The benefit of the group living is the one caregiver will be providing the services for the ongoing meal preparation, laundry services, bathing, the day-to-day living. That a lot of the in-and-out you would see if there was not an onsite caregiver. So having the onsite caregiver is what's going to facilitate and honor the needs of our residents to make sure that they're very well taken care of. Again, with a three-resident, two-one ratio that is unheard of. To say that I'm doing this from a profit standpoint, I'd like for you to see the numbers. It is not. Now, if it can make some money, that's great. With three residents being charged approximately sixty-five hundred dollars a month for all caregiving, food, bathing needs, all of that, I barely break even when twenty-four-hour K is going to run. Twenty-four-hour care runs about eighteen thousand dollars a year.
Joni, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Wouldn't this just be easier just to have it as a rental dwelling?
Yes, but I wanted to do it the right way.
And when you have it as a rental dwelling, you don't necessarily know, you can vet your people, but you don't necessarily know who's going to be living there or what their children are like or how many cars they have.
I have more cars in my house with an eighteen-year-old driver and his friends.
I know that there's a concern about safety for having too many cars in the driveways. But that could be with any kind of rental.
That's one with home, you know, as you own a home. You're going to have a variety of people come visit, and that wouldn't change it. In fact, the reason I did not opt for the rental side of it was because I wanted to, one, go through this process the right way. And, two, I have more control over who I can have in there and specifically in those policies and procedures. If someone is not a good fit, they are removed within three business days. Now, I don't know, I may even know tenant law. Tenant law, you go down a rabbit hole and go broke, and that tenant stays in that house for months on end.
Other question I have for you is, a couple of people said that you didn't have a formal meeting. Or, I know we had blizzards and everything. I think a lot of this might have been worded off if we had had that kind of meeting or had some, because I.
The two gentlemen who spoke, I talked to each of their wives on a one-on-one basis.
I don't think anybody's probably worried too much about, you know, elderly people that are living in the house. It's just the traffic and such, and probably a lot of this could have been, you know, if you would have had a meeting. And I'm saying you probably still should have a meeting with them, whether this passes or not, because I can't speak to what the other board.
And I'm more than happy, I mean, they all have my cell phone numbers, I'm more than happy to reach out to them.
A dialogue in a meeting, like, you know, would probably be a good thing to continue.
That's the thing, too, is I want to be a good steward to the neighbor and to the neighborhood because I own that house, I bought that house. I have a vested interest in making sure that that house and that neighborhood maintains its value. How am I going to protect the value? Well, one, nothing on the outside is changing, I'm making no big signage, I'm not making it look commercial. The integrity of the project is for it to be a home.
Who takes care of the property for you then?
I have a contractor who will do it, truthfully, up to this date, it's been me and my son.
But you have a contractor.
I do have a contractor who takes care of my, yep.
The snow shovel.
Correct.
What about trash, Philip mentioned?
So there is no required dumpster, it is not required for three residents. The onsite caregiver will not live there. I will have a rotating schedule of caregivers I've already vetted. So there is no required dumpster for three residents.
If this gets approved today, would you be agreeable with having a public meeting with all the neighbors?
Absolutely, yes. I want to be a good neighbor, I want to do what's right, I want to address concerns. I would like to say that the concerns that were raised in that letter never came to me initially, they've never come to me until I got that letter. Had any concerns that have come my way or had they had called me and said what their concerns are, I would have loved to have one-on-one conversations. If there were concerns about the property or caregivers, because truthfully, I had concerns about some of the caregivers, which is why they didn't come back. But if I don't know these things, how you're going to. No, I'm saying the complaints they had about the caregivers, domestic violence or smoking marijuana in the yard, that was never shown on my Ring Doorbell, that was never apparent to me. And I did several drop-ins throughout my mother's stay there. And it's, I'm not going to be an offsite, like this big company. That's my house, that's my mom's legacy, that's. And that house, when you're worried about who it's going to go to and maybe the business that was raised, I think if you're looking at the business, it was started in November. To be correct, that's Family Tie Senior Placement Services. And we had a name change due to partnership issue, was formerly Family Tie Senior Move Management. That was started in February and May of two thousand twenty-two.
Joni, did you hear all of Patrick's question about the meeting with the neighbors? Before it goes on to City Council?
Yeah, I'm more than willing to do that.
If it's approved today, you'll have the meeting before it's discussed at City Council?
Yeah, I can, we can schedule before we even leave here now.
I didn't know if you caught what he said.
Yeah, no, I'll have a meeting, I mean, no problem. Thanks.
Any additional?
I'll call up Deborah if she would like to speak.
Deborah, I have to give her.
I also have here with what?
Name and address.
Deborah Smith, six zero zero seven Seward Street. I also have signatures of eight other additional neighbors in the area who have opposed as well. So I leave this with whoever I need to give it to, okay. I still feel like there's a lot of confusion. She shared more information now that we did not know before coming here. It's not that I oppose the business or what she wants to do, I just don't feel like that location is the best place for it.
She's going to have a meeting with you. Any additional comments or questions?
Let's see, they're saying that the group homes are too close together or within six hundred feet. Is that anything you've noticed or?
Sure, I'll elaborate on that.
Also, the permit, if this gets approved, what about the transfer to the next owner?
Sure. So, yeah, the request before you is for small group living, non-disabled. There is also small group living disabled. So I know we've talked about this, we've had several requests for group living facilities in recent years. Both disabled and non-disabled is between four and eight individuals. The differentiation is everyone living with a handicap in order for it to be considered disabled. And then the non-disabled just doesn't have that criteria, okay? Small group living, non-disabled, always requires a special use permit in this zoning district in R four. Okay, small group living disabled is permitted in every residential district. However, if it is within six hundred feet of another group living facility, it requires the special use permit. So, that being said, the six hundred-foot limitation does not eliminate the ability to do a group living facility. It just sometimes kicks in the special use permit process if it was a disabled facility. The request before us for non-disabled always requires the special use permit. The criteria states, you know, identify if there is a group living facility within six hundred feet, but it still could be allowed. You could have them next door theoretically with approval of the special use permit. There is another facility, the six hundred-foot boundary clips a very small portion, the southeast portion of this property. So it is just, it's really about five or ten feet into it. So if this was a small group living disabled application, which usually is permitted, it would need to come through this same process, okay? So this is the appropriate process with the special use permit. Your question, sorry, I lost track.
The transfer of.
Oh, yes.
Use to the next owner.
Yes, the special use permit. Yes, the special use permit criteria does indicate that approval of a use permit runs with the land. There are instances when a specific condition has been placed by the planning board, ultimately City Council, that would limit it to that applicant only, but that would have to be a specific condition in place. Now, that being said, if this was approved, the submitted operating statement, the site plan, that is what carries with the land, and any future operator would have to operate under those approved conditions, okay? So if Joni ran this business, if it was approved for five years, and she decided to sell to somebody else who wanted to do a similar operation, but they wanted to do eight individuals, they'd have to come back for a major amendment and to change that criteria, or if they wanted to do something that, you know, there's criteria that establishes a major amendment.
They're approved.
Yes.
They're coming back.
Yes. So I'll keep going. If you do have other questions, let me know. Obviously, we're seeing more and more need for this with aging population. We are not going to be able to care for all of our aging population with, you know, with large facilities. So there's going to be more and more need for this. We're already seeing an uptick with this request. As far as parking, Joni had mentioned, there was a lot of discussion. This request is compliant with parking requirements. There's no waiver. There's no waivers of any zoning code with this submittal, okay? So absolutely, city staff is fully comfortable with the parking that's being provided, which is code-compliant. Really, I think Joni is almost being over-cautious. Typically, we would not see this come through Planning Board and City Council, because most people would say, hey, I have, you know, caring for three people. That, by definition, would be allowed under single-family without any permission, without any permit. You know, it basically fits under the definition of family, which allows no more than three unrelated people living in the same facility. And, you know, touch on vehicles, I know Joni mentioned this, and there's some pretty large families out there. Hey, I used to live next to a quintuplet family, that there was five, five of the same age. Now, they had moved out before they hit driving age, but theoretically, let's say you have a mom and dad, five or six kids, everyone has a car, I mean, that would be allowed, and that's considered one of the family units. They could also have, they could rent to two unrelated college students that also lived in their home. So this is a residential use. I know that you could label it as a business, but small group living is considered residential. So this is definitely allowed within low-density residential districts. I think that probably is all I have, but to summarize, it was a very good submittal. We received all the information. As you're aware, with group living applications, there's several criteria and information that we need. All of that was provided and is acceptable. There are only four conditions, basically compliance with the site plan, compliance with the operations plan, compliance with all other regulations, and basically stating that the existing trees must remain on the property. If you so wish, you could add a condition that requires a public meeting prior to forwarding to City Council. If there was a desire, you could limit it to this applicant only. Staff is going to keep our recommendation with the four that are listed in the report. So staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow small group living, non-disabled in the R435 district, subject to the four conditions in the report.
Any additional comments? Any motion?
Motion for a special use permit to allow small group living in the R4 district, subject to meeting the four conditions in the recommendation report, and I'm also going to add that the applicant must have a public meeting before submitting to, or before going to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. We need a motion on January's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes. Have a motion and a second. Twenty-five went to layover consent. Kathy, we have a motion and a second. Please record the vote on the minutes.
Soto Longo? Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Just a second.
I believe you still have case twenty-four.
Approved on the consent, delayed like, it was done like ten minutes into the meeting.
Item twenty-four on the docket. Thank you.
Sorry.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Morris?
Soto Longo? Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.